This evening, we have one counselor attending via remote participation. Counselor Hanke has petitioned and received permission to participate in that manner, giving physical attendance would be unreasonably difficult. This is permissible under 940 CMR 29.10.5. Let the record reflect that Board Committee members, Counselor Mandy Jo Hanke is attending remotely via speakerphone for the meeting of February 11, 2019, because it would be unreasonably difficult, which is permissible. Mandy Jo, can you hear me?
Yes.
Let the record reflect that member Counselor Mandy Jo Hanke's attendance via speakerphone can be heard by all present at the meeting, and some of those even further away. It's pretty loud. All votes taken during a meeting with a remote participant shall be by roll call vote. Therefore, as all votes, the town clerk will ask for the individual votes. If technical difficulties arise a result of utilizing remote participation, I will suspend discussion while reasonable efforts are made to correct the problem. If remote participation is disconnected, that fact and time of disconnection will be recorded in the meeting minutes. I have asked Mandy Jo in advance to provide with any agenda items that she would like to reasonably speak to, and Counselor Ross will indicate that the counselor participating remotely wishes to speak in this case. Thank you. Remote counselors are to speak by stating their name. You will be acknowledged, but they won't speak until called upon. Usual time limits apply. So, seeing that we have a quorum, I call the meeting of the town council to order at Welcome all. This meeting is being broadcast live and being recorded by Amherst Media. Copies of the agenda are projected on the wall in the meeting room and were posted in advance of the meeting. If you are interested in speaking during the meeting, please sign the sheet at the side of the room over at this table. I have a couple announcements. First of all, on February 13, 2019, Amherst will mark its 260th anniversary. On that date, an act for erecting the second precinct in the town of Hadley in the county of Hampshire into a district by the name of Amherst was passed by the Great and General Court of Massachusetts. Second, tonight we begin our education on major capital projects, although we have had a preview on the schools. At the town council meeting on Monday, February 25, the council will discuss various funding scenarios for major capital projects. And we hope that you, both listening at home and in the audience, will join us for this educational period in our time. There will be school listening sessions where both town counselors and Amherst School Committee members will be present, and those sessions have been publicized. They will not be official district meetings as we originally had intended. Just scheduling would not allow that. But they will be two meetings on February 27, two on February 28, and one on March 6. The school building application to the Massachusetts School Building Authority will come before the town council for discussion on Monday, March 18, and for a vote on Monday, April 1. One other date to put on your calendar, we will hold a public forum as required by the charter on the budget. At that time, we will be meeting on Thursday, March 7, at the middle school. And as with all public forums, half of the time is devoted to public comment. Speaking of public comment, public comment and the agenda have been rearranged. So, the council wishes to thank you for your patience, as we've organized, and as counselors, we want to communicate that we have heard you. Many counselors and the public have asked that we move public comment earlier in the evening. In addition to that, the Rules of Procedure Ad Hoc Committee has proposed a trial rearrangement of an agenda. This is our second trial and includes movement of public comment earlier as well as rearranging agenda items. In setting the agenda, I have taken into careful consideration the following: the report forwarded by that committee, my strong desire to personally move public comment earlier, my serious reservations about having what could be five or more public comment periods on one agenda, and a request by some counselors to end meetings much earlier than midnight. Finally, public comment to the town council meeting. At town council meetings, there's only one way, and we invite you to communicate with us. However, there are others. You can email us at towncouncil@amherstm.gov. You could send us individual emails with our last name and then our first initial at the same address. You can come visit us during office hours, which we're organizing. Some counselors have done a better job of that than others. And you can come to district meetings, which we'll have at least two a year, in fact, maybe even more. And whenever my husband lets me go grocery shopping and doesn't expect me to return for several hours, you can talk to me there. I had to just enter that. It's been a family joke for years. So, with no hearings, we're moving on to public comment. General public comment on matters other than those under Agenda Items 5A, 5B, and 6, or frankly, others. We will have public comment after those items, 5A, 5B, and 6. Public comments on those will be taken at the relevant time after the council has had their initial discussion. Residents are welcome to express their views for up to one to three minutes. I'll decide on how long when I see how many people wish to speak. And the council will not engage in a dialogue or comment on a matter raised during general public comment. So, these floors open for general public comment. May I see the hands of those who would wish to speak? I see two hands. Let's start with the gentleman in the front. Mr. Cusner. You have to push the button.
Thank you, and good evening. Rob Cusner, and it's nice to join you here in quorum. And to the absent member who's joining us remotely, I wish you were here because I signed my letter with a pen that you'd recognize the color on. It's a nice purple flare pen. Anyway, I don't know if the letter that I put together about an hour ago was distributed. If it is, then I'm happy to just let you read it and keep my comments very brief. This is an opportunity for town council to show what I think proponents of this system of government had promised, namely, the nimbleness of local government. We're now seven months into fiscal year, maybe eight months, depending on how you count, fiscal year 2019. Last spring, we were aware that the governor's budget for public transportation funding to the non-MBTA regional transit authorities, the largest of which is the PVTA that serves us here in Western, you know, the Pioneer Valley, was going to cut the transit support by about $8 million. Happily, some of that was restored by the legislature during the summer, but not enough of it was restored in a way that was, shall we say, non-strings attached for those funds to reappear in the budgets of the transit providers like UMass Transit. So, we're in a situation where, last spring, our legislature at the time overwhelmingly approved a supplemental appropriation that would help alleviate some of the service cuts that we've just experienced in this past month, and that we're going to experience in a much bigger way starting in May, once the summer break for the colleges begins. And those cuts affect some types of public transit services that are happening every day of the week during the daytime. Just as the sun is setting on every summer evening, the two main core bus routes are going to stop running until the next morning. And the service cuts are even worse on weekends. And in general, PVTA service is lighter in the summer. Given our interest in reducing our impact on climate change and other environmental consequences of driving private vehicles, I hope we'll renew our commitment, one that this town and our five college neighbors have committed to for nearly five decades now, our commitment to supporting public transportation locally. I hope that this council will consider two actions, and done in tandem, I think they'll allow us, A, to restore those transit cuts, and B, send a message to the future that we really care about transit in Amherst. And I highlight them in Items 1 and 2 below. One is to follow the lead of five colleges, Five Colleges Incorporated. They've committed to increase their contribution to the PVTA system by $50,000 a year for each of the next five years. It's a long-term commitment, which is something that PVTA likes to see when it agrees to create or restore transit services. They want to have something that's in place for a long time. And following up on that, if the town can commit in a resolution, it can't be formally done in the budget that far in advance, but I think a resolution showing a good faith commitment would go a long way to showing that we care about transit, and PVTA would respond to that. But then, I ask you to encourage the manager, our PVTA representative, and us, citizens who care about transit and who rely on transit, to work with PVTA to make use of the supplemental budget that the town appropriated to restore these transit services during this summer. And that could be done in the FY19 budget. So, thank you for the time. I'm sorry that I haven't sent this to you by email yet, but now I know the email address. I'd forgotten it, and it'll come to you probably as soon as I get back to work. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The gentleman in the back, please come forward and state your name, and restrict your comments to three minutes.
My name is Bill. I am a resident of the Anne Whalen. 260 years ago, this town was perhaps charming. 25 years ago, it was certainly charming. It is now moving inexorably toward what might be termed the desolation of modernity, and it is my impression that every square centimeter of the town will be five-story high-rises, apartment high-rises. I was in Boulder attempting to clean it up many years ago, and the same phenomenon occurred. It's no longer an inhabitable environment, and I would like to propose again that the five-story construction be limited to the other side of town, the Kendrick Park side as opposed to the Switzer. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Were there any other public comments at this time? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on with our agenda. We have a variety of capital public projects that are going to be discussed tonight. I mentioned before that we have already had a discussion with the schools about the possibility of a new school building, and then we're, tonight, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Bockelman and ask that he introduce this piece of the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I want to put this in context a little bit. Town of Amherst has not built a new building in 30 years. We have pent up demand for significant capital investment. I think you have seen our buildings and have internalized the need for new buildings. We seem to have taken, built buildings in little bunches. Like, 30 years ago, we built the police station.
Just one second. Mandy Jo, are you still connected?
Yes. Sorry about that.
Okay. Thank you.
So, 30 years ago, we haven't built a new building in this town in 30 years. We built the police station. 45 years ago, we built a number of, our three elementary schools plus the North Fire Station. 70 years ago, we built the Banks Community Center. 90 years ago, roughly, the Jones Library and the Munson Building. Then 120 years ago, we built the Town Hall, the Fire Station, and the DPW. The Town Hall was renovated in 1998. So, what we wanted to show you tonight is, with the new council coming in, it's an opportunity for the town to begin addressing these significant capital needs. But the first thing we have to do is say, are they really needs, and why are they needs? And to tell you what has happened since these needs have come to fruition. So, tonight, the intent is for us, for the library director, the fire chief, and the DPW superintendent, to lay out what the problem is with the buildings, where we are in the process for replacement, and entertain any questions that you may have on the conceptual needs, not really talking about the funds, because that, as the president said, is coming up at the next meeting and will be discussed at the finance committee meeting as well. So, that's to lay the groundwork for tonight. And so, the concept that we have been working on is something that I've been calling One Town, One Plan. We need to address, take on all these capital projects, plus the things that we have, that the council has identified, like investment in roads and other smaller investments, maintenance that we have to do in terms of roofs and things like that, and come to a consensus, as the superintendent had talked about, about how we can afford what we can do, and what is our plan over the next several decades? Because it's not a five-year plan or 10-year plan, it's a decades-long plan. So, this is our first foray in just trying to share information. There are a lot of slides. Our presenters know that they're going to, especially the DPW and Fire, they have lots of slides to show you. They're going to go fast, so don't worry when you see the number on there. And the other thing that the DPW superintendent will do is sort of lay out what's it take to build a public construction project? So, you can see the steps that have to be required, that have to be followed in order for us to build a new building. So, first, I will ask the library director, Sharon Sherry, to come up and do her presentation.
Do I get a click for me, or do I get a clicker? Sorry. Will that do it?
Thank you so much for this opportunity. I wanted to start by introducing the library trustees that are in the room tonight. Austin Sarret, the president of our trustees, is back there. Tamsin Ely. Chris Hoffman.
I think, I hope I'm not missing anyone.
Okay. Here we go. Founded in 1921, the Jones Library quickly became one of the iconic institutions in Amherst. Samueline at Jones' bequest enabled a town of 5,500 to build a library that was regionally celebrated in its day because it exemplified the central role the library should play in a town with Amherst's unique values and interests. More than just a place, a cozy place to read a book, the Jones Library welcomed all its citizens to the town's cultural heart. Fast forward to today's project. It's been in the works for over seven years, and the specific design proposal is the result of almost three years' worth of planning by about 20 members of the community, along with several architectural professionals in dozens of open meetings. So, I thought we'd put this project through a SOAR strategic planning analysis, talking about its strengths, opportunities, aspirations, and results. So, starting with our strengths, what does our building do well? Amherst is special. It takes great pride in its unique character. It's the land of the book and the plow. And Amherst Town Library is also special. We are already more heavily patronized than any other library in the state, except Springfield and 19 other Boston-area libraries. We serve over 250,000 visitors and circulate almost 500,000 items every year. In addition, the 1921 founders had a radical vision, that the library can play a central role in supporting the character of a town. Thus, the Jones was designed and built to look like a house. It originally included a 250-seat theater for performances, concerts, lectures, and movies, and an art gallery to offer area artists and craftspeople a public space in which to exhibit their work and encourage appreciation and understanding of art. The Jones has gone through several transformations in its time, but two of them were quite substantive in that they drastically changed the look and feel of the original 1928 building. The first large-scale renovation was in the late 1960s. Planning began, and money was secured in 1966, and the work was done in '67 and '68. This renovation removed the auditorium seating area. The stage became a mezzanine with additional shelving, and a floor was added above the auditorium seating area that became the Burgess Fine Arts Room. In the basement, the stage coach was removed, along with a coal bin, to make space for more shelving. Studios for painting, ceramics, and weaving replaced a catalog room and a youth activity Planning for the second major renovation began in 1988. It was an important expansion renovation project. The trustees received an MBLC construction grant in 1991, and the work was finished in 1993. This renovation, which undid some of the 1960s' work, added 12,000 square feet to the building. It removed the stage and the Burgess Room, restoring the height of the current fiction room. It removed the art studios, updated heating and cooling systems, updated lighting, improved handicapped accessibility, created the Woodbury Meeting Room space and the back entrance. It also created the atrium, added space for the ESL program, and created the dedicated space for special collections. Opportunities, what circumstances can we leverage for success? The last renovation of the Jones that I just talked about followed a plan intended to serve the library for 20 years. And now, in 2019, all of the building systems have come to the end of their life cycles, and it's time for the Jones physical plant needs to be addressed. We need to become substantially greener, improve overall energy efficiency, and replace the atrium that's too hot in the summer, too cold in the winter, and leaky year-round. We can no longer fulfill our historic mission. We offer a terrific set of activities and programs, which makes us a community-building hub. But the present facility does not allow us to serve large portions of the population, including those who are mobility impaired, children and families. The current spaces that are allocated towards, to children's needs, whether for activities or simply reading aloud, are inadequate to the demand. Almost 7,000 children attend activities annually, and parents often have to leave because all the reading spaces in the building are already taken. Teenagers, there is no dedicated space for teens in our building, either to work on collaborative school projects or to gather when the school buildings are closed. We should be eager to attract them to their own space in the library, instead of to the streets, or de facto to the unsupervised stacks of the basement of the current building. Those learning English, 25% of those in Amherst schools come from families whose first language is not English. We need to provide welcoming quarters for English-language learners through our recognized ESL program that meets the needs of this growing Amherst demographic. And those needing access to computers, 33% of Amherst residents live below the poverty level, and the Jones computer terminals are regularly oversubscribed, reflecting the dramatic change in the ways knowledge and culture is being shared and transmitted. Library computers are an especially important lifeline for the growing population of the town that cannot afford a computer at home. There are also safety issues that we have to address in this building due to a severe sack of staff sightlines. The basement, elevators, stairwells, the cozy rooms, and the garden are notorious locations for unwanted activity, and our security cameras are reactive rather than proactive. Once the crime occurs, the damage has already been done. And then there's the fact that the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners calls the Jones Library "the most dysfunctional public library in the state of Massachusetts." We need to preserve the significant elements of the distinctive look and feel of the original 1928 building while replacing the 1993 edition with spaces that are much more user-friendly for both patrons and staff. And I'll take you on a visual tour. So, speaking of the building overall, none of the original 1928 building is ADA compliant, and much of the 1993 edition, including the stacks, are no longer up to code. The steep pitch of our roof dumps snow onto the heads of patrons. The six staircases are confusing and unsafe due to lack of staff sightlines. All our building systems need to be replaced. The cobbled-together technology is old and inefficient. The chiller compressor is operating at half-capacity due to costly repairs that are needed. The pneumatic thermostats are very difficult to calibrate if they work at all. The building is not wired properly for a 21st-century library. The overall layout of the building is extremely confusing, as well as many other maintenance issues which need to be addressed, such as stained and faded carpeting and peeling paint and plaster. Speaking more specifically about the different rooms in the building, the children's room is not big enough to handle the demand. There's not enough patron seating there. The nonfiction stacks are too high, they're too close together. The collection is housed on two different floors, and that creates a hardship for parents of multiple children. The room is outdated. The cramped children's librarian's office is located in what should be a gorgeous reading nook, and that space contains the only bathroom on the main floor. The Jones adult circulation desk is the worst circulation desk I've ever seen. It is too small for staff functions, and it's not good for customer service. It has three service points, so patrons are never sure whether or not they're standing in the right line, and the backs of staff are always facing the patrons. The interlibrary loan room is neither heated nor cooled, and it's just not big enough to handle our interlibrary loan delivery of up to 20 bins a day. The atrium roof, it's poorly designed and has leaked badly since it was installed. Many attempts throughout the years to make it watertight have just failed, so we have to keep buckets near the adult circulation desk to collect the rainwater. In the reference department, there's not enough computers, and this is important because the majority of research materials nowadays are accessed online. The nonfiction stacks in the basement, I consider it's a warehouse for books. The space is not inviting, and it's unsafe to be there because there's no staff presence. There isn't enough space for ESL services to meet the demand, and it's very difficult to find. Then there's the special collections department, which is severely undersized. The materials which do not fit in that archive are not being stored in climate-controlled spaces. The exhibit room is only open when special collections is open, and you have to be buzzed in. There's no door on the climate-controlled storage area, which is like leaving your doors and windows open at home while you have the air conditioning going. There's not enough room to collect and store additional items, and because this department's location is so far away, it's very difficult to find your way back out of the building. And then there's our telecommunications room, which is really quite scary. There's little space for expansion in the room, and we have data wiring running through the pipes in our boiler room. So, how do we fix all these problems? We, again, became involved in the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners Construction Grant Program, beginning with the creation of a building program. It's a detailed inventory, ours is six pages long, of all the functions in the library, including the number of books, computers, chairs, and tables for each room. I do want to reiterate that the only reason our project is here before you now is because of the availability of this grant. The MBLC's program only comes around once every 10-plus years, and this is why we have been limiting our JCPC requests over the past few years, because we knew this would be the most cost-effective way to preserve and enhance the library. So, we hired fine gold Alexander architects out of Boston. They are historic preservation experts, and we gave them our program to analyze. Also, remember that the Massachusetts Legislature has allocated substantial funds specifically for library projects such as ours. Similar funding will not be available again until 2025 or later. Similar funding will not be available again until 2025 or later. And as I said previously, our project is considered a high priority by the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners because they fully understand our building's deficiencies and know that the Jones plays an important role in western Massachusetts. We are very much a regional library. Through this grant program, the MBLC is returning your tax dollars to Amherst. The architects' work was guided by several principles. They found that they could not solve our problems within the existing forty-eight-thousand-square-foot footprint. The facts show that we must expand to sixty-five-thousand square feet. The MBLC publicly stated it will not fund a smaller project. If the town wants to go smaller, the town will have to pay for it on its own. The most efficient way to add square footage to the Jones is by building off the rear of the building, rather than by adding an additional floor. Within the past few weeks, our architects have researched again the possibility of going up in order to preserve more of the rear garden. But due to three primary concerns, it has been decided that building up an additional floor is not an option. And the first problem is shown on this slide: massing. So building up another level, as is shown on the picture on your right, it will negatively impact the original structure visually and most likely have trouble getting Massachusetts' Historic Commission approval. Secondly, the costs: It would be more expensive to build up. And thirdly, staffing issues: We would need more staff if there were another floor going up. Thus, it was decided that building out to the rear is best, as is shown on the picture on the left. And to be clear, this is the design and the footprint that we submitted in our grant application. The footprint is not getting bigger than what was already approved by the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners. And regarding the rear garden, we have preserved seventy percent of that space, and the final designs will be a result of a community planning process. No landscaping plans have been proposed. Instead, the trustees have appointed a gardens advisory committee, which will help oversee the project. The landscaping is already included in the project's budget, and the plan is for the existing plants to be moved or replaced in accordance with the community's plan. And on to aspirations: What do we want to achieve in the future? We are looking for a building that can be used by everybody in town: teens, people with mobility issues, the financially disadvantaged, and non-English speakers. A building which better meets the needs of traditional book borrowers and encourages user independence with more visible and efficient circulation services. And a building which attracts the interests of the next generation of library patrons: Is safe and has clear signage, so patrons feel comfortable navigating the building; preserves our history, including the refurbishment of the wood floors and the fireplaces and the beautiful wood paneling; and safeguards our future by being green; offers plenty of collaborative and silent spaces; and has windows and comfortable seating on every floor overlooking the gardens. And what are the tangible outcomes we'll see that demonstrate we have achieved our goals? The architects tried to find a good combination of preserving the look and feel of the original building and designing a new addition that is open and adaptable. The designs shown here are very much still a work in progress, and that's why they're so small here. The MBLC is requiring that we move the large meeting room from the first floor to a different spot, so thus there's going to be a ripple effect throughout all of the designs. But in the end, what we're looking for is a front entrance that's handicapped accessible, all of the children's services will be on one floor, so families have easy access, low shelving in the children's room so the kids can reach their books on their own, a children's activities room on the same floor as the collections, a storytime nook, the young adult room, which will be bright and welcoming and encased in glass walls, so they can be noisy but we can still see them. It will be filled with technology and their collection of materials. Restrooms on all the floors. The circulation desk will have very clear points of service. There will be a book return that doesn't overflow, so the police department won't get phone calls anymore. And plenty of computers, as well as group study rooms. The large Woodbury Room will almost double in size. It will have windows and can be used for meetings and events even when the library's closed. The entire special collections collection will be stored in a truly climate-controlled space, and the exhibits will be open to everyone during all library hours. We are also making room for the town's refurbished Civil War tablets. Regarding aesthetics: The trustees are firmly committed to maintaining the homey feel of the Jones Library. It's up to the architects to combine the wonderful historic feel of the Jones along with the updated technological services that we need to provide to our patrons. Regarding the interior appearance: The MBLC does not care about aesthetics. It's up to each individual community to decide on the look and feel of their public library. So that's why design development, we haven't been through it yet. That doesn't happen until after the grant is received and the town has approved its share of project costs. And regarding the exterior appearance: The entire facade of the nineteen-twenty-eight building will be kept as it is, except for some protection of the front door from ice and snow. And the appearance of the new addition is not yet determined. There's going to be a balancing act with the budget, primarily between historic preservation and lead certification. And you'll be hearing more about the budget for the project. The total cost is thirty-five-point-six million, with thirteen-point-seven coming from the MBLC, six million coming from private donations and historic tax credits, and fifteen-point-nine coming from the town. And what if the project isn't approved? Well, passing on this grant is not going to prevent expenditures. Because of our deferred maintenance needs, we could easily spend millions and get nothing for it. So for a moment, let's say we've solved all our collection space problems. We've weeded our collections to the fullest. Patrons are using the ILL system more heavily, and we have properly climate-controlled our special collections materials. We are now housing our entire mystery and science fiction collection in the basement of another town-owned building. Let's say we've now made enough room at the Jones for a teen room, and ramps have been added so that staff with mobility issues can get to the staff bathrooms. One could say that most of our problems have been solved. Except they won't be. Millions of dollars will still need to be spent replacing all of the building's outdated systems. All of our systems have come to the end of their lifespan and need to be redesigned and replaced. We are in the same boat on a smaller scale as the schools. If the town votes down the grant, the trustees will have to go through the JCPC process, over several years probably, in order to fix many expensive problems. Our immediate needs are labeled Phase Number One on the left side of this slide. The fire alarm, sprinkler, and burglar alarms need to be replaced. The atrium has to be entirely removed, redesigned, and rebuilt. No matter what, it cannot be repaired. The HVAC system needs to be entirely removed, redesigned, and rebuilt. It cannot be repaired. The slate roof has to be repaired. Most of the windows, all the carpeting, needs to be replaced. The front elevator needs to be replaced to make it accessible. And the entire interior needs to be repainted. Also, several of these individual projects will trigger a domino effect. For example, if we replace the glass atrium, we'll also need to replace the HVAC system to avoid heat-created ice dams. So as you can see, Phase Number One is a no-frills list. According to the 2017 cost estimate, it's going to cost a minimum of ten-point-seven million dollars to do the work in Phase One. And that ten-point-seven-million-dollar figure does not include the Phase Two work, listed on the right side of the slide. We do not have a cost estimate for the Phase Two work because we would have had to hire an architect to get that cost estimate, and architects are expensive. And after going through the JCPC process, the resulting structure will still lack sufficient space and will still not be entirely up to code, because without a substantial redesign, several areas will still not be handicapped accessible, but it will have cost the town almost the same amount of money as if it had taken advantage of the grant. Also, dealing only with the library's deferred maintenance, accessibility, and code requirements will create some of the same hardships as going through an entire expansion renovation project, because we'll still need to relocate temporarily while the work is being done. But the result will not be the 21st-century learning center that Amherst needs. We believe it would be a mistake to spend ten million dollars on repairs when before us lies such an incredible opportunity for so much more. The trustees propose that the town accept the state grant. Our goal is to spend sixteen million after private fundraising of town money so that Amherst can have the library it needs, a library which will last long after you and I are gone. The beauty of this grant is that we'll get all our systems replaced and we'll have everything else our patrons want, including safety, security, common-sense flow, bathrooms on all levels, lots of natural light, green technology, and historic preservation. I'm going to end here with the estimated timeline that you've seen before. We're expecting an FY21 grant announcement, an FY22 town council approval, FY23 construction would begin, and construction would end in FY25. Thank you.
Are there specific questions to share at this time from the council?
Thank you for their presentation and also what has clearly been a lot of work from a lot of people. I want to start out a bit where Town Manager Paul Bauchemin introduced, in terms of thinking the whole town, that we need one plan that fits the whole town. And given our restricted, very restricted budgets, if we line up all the big projects, I think we're going to have to focus on needs, really with a laser beam, and not go to wants. So we might have an ideal situation if we had a lot of money to hone down. So I want to ask a little bit more about the fixing the Jones side of it, which I understand you couldn't just go for a grant, you had to do the expansion. You know, so you're expanding the proposed project increases the total size by about thirty-five percent and demolishes the new wing that was added, so it's a major construction project as well as a renovation. I went on your website, so I think the renovation estimates were from Western builders. Did I get the right download? So, you know, you could either phase it in, or you could do it all at once. And as you had pointed out, it didn't do certain kinds of things in their estimate. Their costs were a little bit lower on the website than what you showed here, about a million lower. So I'm not sure about the difference, but say it's in the ten or eleven range. So I think if I'm looking at the numbers right, that if we got a grant, the town share would be anywhere from around six million to more, even with the grant, than it would be in repairing and renovating. And when I say "or more," you need to raise another six million dollars. So what happens if you don't raise the money and we're in the middle of the building project is sort of like, that's where, sixteen million is where you think you're going to be. So I have a, how much of the urgent need could be met by the repair and renovation in a phased way, the JCPC route, rather than an entire building project?
So that's what I was talking about with the Phase One. That's the ten-million-dollar estimate, so that's just for those items. Those are the immediate needs.
And could we, as a town, be living with a functioning library for several years with that type of expenditure?
Oh, well, certainly. You know, the town can live with whatever library it is going to, you know, put into it. So, yeah, I mean, we're living in it now, even without anything being done to it.
Are there other questions? Yes, Dorothy.
Dorothy, state your husband's contact.
Excuse me?
State your husband's contact.
Oh, yeah, I'm going to tell you that my husband, Bob Pam, who is a trustee of the library, can't be here tonight because he's babysitting. We couldn't be in two places, he couldn't be in two places at once, but he does wish you were here. So I do agree with you that the town's public library is something that expresses, in a way, the soul of the town. And hearing the details of the atrium, in my mind, I had kept hoping that that could be repaired, or we could keep the sense of the large, gracious space and maybe remove some of the stacks and have something that some people refer to as the town's living room. But you're saying that from the very beginning, it did not work, that it leaked. Is there any plan for some kind of space in the library that would be, one, for people to come and to sit and to reflect and to be able to perhaps talk to somebody, but in a quiet way? A public space of an informal type?
Yeah, I think what we have been working on with the architects is exactly a nice mixture of having some totally quiet spaces and having some more noisy spaces and having those spaces in between. So, yeah, that's the opportunity that's before us.
So what was the date of the addition? The addition?
The most recent one, it ended in ninety-three.
So technically, that's the newest building. So finished after the police station. But it's an interesting study in the tale of two buildings, right? So the Jones Edition, you know, by all accounts is, no, I'm sorry, by a lot of accounts, is, you know, it feels worn out for many reasons. And the, you know, the police station, not that I've been in there that often, you know, you know, it simply feels, you know, it feels more solid. But I think it's an interesting case study in value engineering. So we had, the original architect is, for the owner of the firm has passed away, but one of his helpers came to UMass last year and talked about, she talked about, kind of the original scheme for the nineteen-ninety-three addition and really what happened in the value engineering process. So, you know, I wasn't around at the time, but as far as I understand it, in order to meet a budget, a lot of things were cut. And I think it's those cuts that then made the current Jones, as a whole, really not function to the highest degree possible. So I mention that in part because it's a lesson going forward, but also in part because people, so many people ask the question, "Why are we tearing down something?" Or "Why is there a proposal to tear down something that's only..." I can't do the math.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six years old.
Evan?
I feel like you said this, but I may have forgotten it. The ten-point-seven million...
Is your mic on?
It is. I can hold it closer. That ten-point-seven million, that's just that deferred maintenance list? Does that include, is there an ability to deal with some of the concerns over space for English-language learners or teens within that ten-point-seven million, or is that strictly those?
Yeah, the ten-point-seven million is just the items in that list. It doesn't add space anywhere. It's just fixing things.
So when we ask the question, "Is this something that we could live with?", that would mean we would still be facing the problems of not having sufficient space to serve our underserved communities, English-language learners, teens, low-income people, correct?
Thank you, yes.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Kathy?
I just want to follow up on that. Have you, you did a nice walkthrough with me of all the different rooms in the library. Has there, was there a step at which you said, "Suppose we reconfigure the use of our current space to build on Evans"?
Yeah, before we got involved...
Use this space for teens and move something else over here, move things around?
Yeah, so that was a part of my spiel. Let's say that we've taken care of all our space issues by, you know, weeding heavily and, you know, off-site storage and all of that stuff. You've still got to spend well over ten million dollars to fix the building problems.
Any other questions? Yes, Pat?
The off-site storage, is that fee, are fees required with that, that we would be paying for appropriate storage?
Yeah, I mean, depending on where it went, yeah, so I...
Yes.
Assuming I'd have to rent space somewhere, I mean, that would in essence be creating a third branch, and I'd have to pay for heating, electricity... be creating a third branch, and I'd have to pay for heating, electricity, and all of that. Thank you.
Yes, Dorothy?
I was in the library recently, and I was in the lower level, and I discovered by talking to some people that that's where the teens go. And it, I, if I were a teen, would actually like the space, but it's completely unsupervised, and it's not really safe. So I do think you need a new teen space.
I do have a question, and that is, would you have to vacate the library under either circumstance? A total renovation because you're adding an addition, or the, just the repairs?
So, I'm just a librarian, but yeah, if we do a complete renovation, the plan is to be located in an interim space for the duration, so that it can be done quickly and safely. As far as the, you know, for example, if you, if we have to rip out the atrium, I would think we would have to close the library, because it's right smack dab in the, in the middle of the space and, you know, to get to the bathrooms and things like that. So, yeah, we'd have to be located somewhere else, no matter what.
Is the cost of relocation and remove, and moving back in this estimate?
It's in the grant budget estimate, yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Shalini?
So in the slide with the opportunities, do you have a sense, so I'm sure you do, which services are currently being utilized the most, and which ones would, you know, be facilitated better if, with the new space?
The children's services are definitely utilized the most, I believe. Yeah, and I, I want to say what we're proposing is doubling or tripling the size of the children's department, and so that families can really come and have all their needs taken care of. And, yeah. Thank you.
Can I just follow up with that? Then, so many, the other areas that, that we are attributing to the new building, would those really be needed?
I would say yes. So if you're a teenager, you need to be in a teen space and?
So are those, I mean, I'm just trying to just get a sense of what, what is the most value we'll get out of the expansion? So what are the services that will be most used? So we may create space for teenagers, but are they coming? Or what can we do perhaps to, to make?
Oh, so the teenagers are definitely coming. So, you know, when I started working here, the headline in the newspaper was always, there's a teen problem at the Jones. And that's a shame. The teen, the word teen should never be put next to problem. The fact that these teenagers are coming to the library is the coolest thing in the Hawaiian world. And so the trustees and I, we, we hired a young adult librarian, so we actually, we have an actual position now. And if you do things with these kids, they will be successful library users, and they will grow up knowing that being in a library is good, and, and they're not being given dirty looks, and, and they can eat, and they can make noise, because these are not, they're not children, and they're not adults. Their, their brains are not fully formed yet. We want them to be teenagers, and they deserve their own spaces, and they are our patrons.
Are there other questions at this time? I failed to mention, we are going to take public comment at the end of all of the Capitol projects. I'd hate to do that to you, but otherwise, we would have public comment at six different times tonight, so. I do want to ask one other question, and this is actually a point of information. The library is not, quote, owned by the town. It's certainly part of the town. Therefore, it is not subject to the zero energy bylaw. However, I heard you mention LEED certification, which some people debate whether that's the way to go or not, but, and, but I gather that is also in your plan?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much.
Good evening.
Good evening.
If I stand, will that actually block people from seeing the back screen?
No.
We need to hear. We need to be close enough to the microphone that we can hear.
Right. Guilford, you do need to be close enough to the microphone so we can hear.
Yeah. Sorry.
It's okay.
And you can like do a karaoke thing here if you wanted to, and have a really good time with this. I actually do this better when I stand up, and I apologize if that makes people uncomfortable, but I do like it a little better. So I was asked to go over some of the classroom work that many of the town staff members have to go through to learn how to do these projects and to be certified to do these projects. The Inspector General's Office controls procurement in the state, and they've come up with a program called the MCPPO Program, which is the Massachusetts Certified Public Procurement Officer Program. There's about four of us in the town, I think. There's now five of us in the town who are certified in this, and there's one in the school. It's kind of a thing that's catching on, and a lot of people being certified because it keeps us from breaking the rules, which was actually really popular about the time when they were building a lot of additions at UMass in Boston. Do you want to look it up? You can look up the Ward Commission, and a lot of what I talk about has come out of the Ward Commission findings and go way back to when they were building and giving contracts to buddies, and giving gifts to buddies, and friends, and family, and people were doing all this stuff. So that's why we have these rules. They are, they do seem quite onerous at times, but they are what they are, and this is where we go. Okay, so we're not, so this is basically an overview of how we lay out a, a project. If you're building a building, building projects is in the middle. Building projects are here in the middle. If we're a local government or a state government, we follow the same rules. If the designer fee is over 30,000, or if the project's going to be over 300,000, we have to do a special way of hiring a designer. It's called the designer selection process. And if we're over $10,000, we have to follow MGL 149, which is a lot of other cool stuff. This slide actually shows public works. I really was, wish it wasn't there for you, because I don't want you to get confused, but these are the rules that control public works type structures and projects. Public works are considered horizontal construction, you're building things horizontally. Buildings are vertical. And if I switch into that frame of reference, that's what I'm talking about. Buildings go vertical, public works projects are horizontal. We use a process here in the town called design, plan, design, bid it, and construct it. So it's planning, design, construction. Bid, design, construct, the same thing. So it's a word you'll hear a lot. We design it, then we go out to bid it, and then we construct it. There are other ways to do it. They're much more difficult. There's many, many, many more requirements on the town if we do it that way. This is a straightforward way of doing it if you have a simple project. If you have a very intricate, unknown project, you would do it one of the other ways of doing it. This is your basic way of doing the projects. Some definitions. Owner. You are the owners. The town is the owner. As the representative of the town, that's, that's you. As the people of the town, that belongs to you as well, the owners. You define what you want to do. You decide what you're going to do. You define who's going to pay for it. You define, sign how you're going to do it, and make sure we follow the rules. That's what the owners' responsibilities are. You can have a construction manager. This is also known as the clerk of the works to people who have been around a little while longer. Construction manager is not required, but you can have one, and that person helps the owner make their project and make their project go forward. You may be required to have a owner's project manager. So if your building is more than 1.5 million dollars, you have to have an owner's project manager. If you have an owner's project manager, you have to do designer selection based on the qualifications of the firm, not based on price. You have to ask for the best qualified, choose the best qualified, then negotiate the price, and if you don't like the price and don't like that, as that goes along, then you go to the second qualified. But you have to have a reason why you didn't go with the first qualified. And the first reason cannot be they were just too high. That's not allowed. You can also assign a staff member to do this. In the school projects, we've had a consultant doing this, in the library project, we had a consultant, in the fire and DPW project, and in the library project in North Amherst, we've had a staff member do it, because we've still been fleshing these projects out moving forward. You can change to a contracted person at any time in the process. You just have to be careful about making sure you, you do it in synchronization and you don't mess things up a little bit. If any of these projects is over 50 million dollars, we're required to have an owner's representative, which is basically clerk of the works. You have to have a clerk of work if this project's going to be more than 50 million dollars. I think we might be getting close now to that number on a couple of projects. Designer. The designer is the person we hire to design the project, lay the project out, bid the project, and help us construct the project. Because it's over the threshold that we talked about earlier, we have to do a qualification-based selection of a designer. You cannot just do it based on bids and price. You have to ask for their qualifications, you have to examine their qualifications, then you have to decide this is going to be the person we want to choose, and then you negotiate the price. Some parts of this process, you can do in steps, and you can set the prices, and then they can say whether they want to do it or not. That's only easily in the first part of the process, you can set that price. And in the second part, you usually have to go with more of the industry standard of what that price should be based on the building you've now come up with. Contractor. If we do this in a simple format, this is the person who builds the building, and it could be the person who builds the building with all his friends, his subcontractors. We will have to have subcontractors in this process, because we will have work that's over the threshold for requiring filed subbids and to have a definitive sub-bidding project, sub-bidding process, sorry. So bidding this is, is difficult, because we have to design it, then we have to bid subs, and then we bid contractors, take those, and they can bid, use those subs, and then they bid the project. That's kind of how it goes. You can design, you can bid this contractor if you want to, but then you still have to do filed subbids and some of that on the subpart as well. So it's usually subs, then it's the general contractor that bid it. So it's a, it's a bigger process. It's not like, public works projects, we're a little easier.
Vertical or horizontal?
Yeah, if you think about it, when you go up, it's more difficult. When you're going on the ground, it's easy, it's smooth. You either go downhill, or, okay, sorry. This is the overall, this is the overall picture for you. Owner, you have your construction manager, which actually, you could have, you could have three people over there in your construction manager. You can have your construction manager you choose, you can have your required OPM, and if the project's over 50 million dollars, you can have another construction manager. That's a lot of overhead over there on that side, but you may be required to have some of it. You have your designer, you have your designer who has his specialty people. As we in Amherst, definitely going to probably have a environmental specialty person there who's in green buildings and all that type of, making sure we meet the green, the zero.
Zero energy bylaw.
Zero bylaw. Sorry about that. You're definitely going to have the person, library, you're going to have a library consultant. Fire, you're going to have a fire consultant, and Tim will talk about that, and Mr. Nelson will talk about that a little later. They had, we had a special person who came on board, who was, his, his specialty was designing fire things. Storage for OB, scuba gear, laundry machines for washing gear, so they don't contaminate the whole building. All that stuff, he was an expert at doing that. And then you have the architect who knew how to design the building and put it all together. So your team will be made up of subs and a designer, and subs and a general side. And then this is just a, a slide that brings back together what qualification-based selection of a designer is. And this is kind of how you do it. You basically are required by those two laws, and it's competition based on qualification, not price. Now, if you go to a class and you take one of these classes that the state offers, this whole slide shows about an hour and a half, right? I really condensed it down. And actually, this is probably all I took out of the whole class anyhow for that hour and a half. So that's that one. Do you want questions or no?
Sure. Questions specifically on this? Yes, Dorothy?
Dorothy, well, I, I guess I'm quite surprised to hear about this method of bidding. I think New York City, it's, it's competitive bidding, and price has a lot to do with it. So who set up this process and who requires it? Is this by choice we're doing this, or is this a Massachusetts law?
It's a Massachusetts law that we have to do designer selection for our designers. It's, if you want, if you want to look it up, I'll leave it up there. You can go to MGL, Chapter 7C, go to Section 44 and 58. That's actually the section that requires it and talks about it. The selection for the OPM is the other one.
Kathy?
Does that apply just to the designer's side, not to the contractor's side?
That, that applies to the designer's side. When we get into the contractor's side, depending on the price, we may have to have a certified contractor, who has to be told to us, the contractor is certified to bid these items, and then we can only choose from those contractors. We can't just choose from a local contractor because he's local, but if he's not certified, he can't bid.
Yes, Shalini?
So if you had designers who had some, the same qualifications, would, would you then be able to choose based on price?
No. You have to choose based on qualifications first. You cannot look at the price to tie, break a tiebreaker. You have to figure out some way to break the tie without looking at a price. You can say who has the best Friday lunches. You can ask.
Yeah, that's, that's, how do you define qualifications? Is?
Well, you'll define qualifications when you start looking for your pro, designer. So if you're doing a fire station, do they, have they done fire stations? How many fire stations have you done in the last five years? How many, so if you get six contract, six designers, and they've all done five contractors in the last five years, then you'll go, you need other qualifications. So there's, how many have you done? How many have you done on time? What have been the comments from your, the people you've worked for? Have there been good comments, have there been bad comments? You'll actually check those references. So those are, all go into the selection process.
Check the web. Yes, Steve?
So I'm pretty sure that qualification-based selection is a characteristic of all 50 states for choosing architects, professionals, basically architects, engineers? Yes?
I'm only certified in this state.
Okay, that's, I'm actually stating that as a fact. But the other thing I want to mention is that, you mentioned the Ward Commission. So the Ward Commission, I was in architecture school, the Ward Commission was in the early 80s. It had to do with scandals, mostly at UMass.
Boston.
Boston, a little bit of UMass Amherst. And this entire, this seems very cumbersome, but the fact is, there really has not been a construction scandal in Massachusetts since the Ward Commission. So we've actually, whether, there is a price to pay for this, but the, the price is scandal-free for, however, I've turned on math tonight, so.
Having, being very familiar with the Mass, UMass-Boston situation, basically, it was a whole entire campus built on top of a two-story parking garage, which is no longer able to be used. And the price of trying to make that campus stop sinking is enormous. Yes? Yes?
And just to note that Ward was the president of Amherst College and that he chaired that commission.
Hmm. Okay. Andy.
Yes, when you talk about qualifications, that we would be, we design the qualifications, we specify what they are, and can we include familiarity with zero net energy construction as part of the qualification?
Yes, you can. You can actually write in there that you want people who have specific experience and qualifications in that field.
Other questions on this part of it? Moving on.
So I was also, this is another, this is another hour and a half that you go through class, and I promise you, I made it much shorter, too. So when you're procuring the design contracts, just, they have to be licensed registered, licensed and registered people in Massachusetts. You cannot have a company from New York come in and do it unless they have a license to work in Massachusetts. So that's one of the biggest qualifiers you have, is that these people are qualified and licensed to work in this state. These are the phases and what the designers mostly do. You have the planning phase or feasibility phase. From the feasibility phase, you'll get schematic design documents, and usually those two phases go together. And then you have design development and construction documents. Usually those two go together. There'll be a brief pause usually, but they're kind of lumped together to make the project go well. Then they'll do construction, which is, they'll do the bidding process, help us with the bidding, help us put the bids out, make sure all the bidding goes well, and then they'll do contract, construction contract administration for the building, building cycle. There's also the end of this, which doesn't get talked about much, is once you finish the construction, you have commissioning and you have takeover and closeout of the project, which is actually a big part. It's lumped into the construction and contract administration, but it's something to think about because as you, the more detailed and the more interesting things you have in your buildings, net zero energy type stuff, the more you want to make sure that your commissioning aspect of your building is very thorough. You don't want someone to say they just slapped solar panels on a bunch of things and they're all work fine. You want to make sure it actually does work fine. So there's a lot of those things that, in the end of the project, needs to be thought about as well, just the, it's not talked about much here, so I just want to bring it up. So then, planting stage is usually confirms what you need and all these things, and it's kind of, what do you need to make these requirements? You'll see, you saw it in the library, the library, they do a, big charts of what they have. You'll see in the DPW and the fire, we actually talk about what we need, what we do, how much space you need for that, what's normal space requirement for to have that, and it's all charted together and puts into a big chart. So basically, the study does talk about that, puts all that together. Study does come up, and there are places where the study will say, well, you just need to redo your building. You just need to do this, you don't need a new building. I can tell you in the fire and DPW studies, it was, you need to do something besides redo your buildings. That was the final outcome of the studies. Your buildings aren't suitable for what you use them for.
Right.
So out of this stage, you do get schematic designs and preliminary specifications, and that really big, really big cost number, which scares the bejesus out of everybody because it's so far, it's so preliminary and so far in the future, the building, that they put a lot of, a lot of condition on it and a lot of contingency into it. So much contingency that you say, cut that back, cut that back. It really will scare you, the number. But this is the preliminary side, and remember, it's preliminary. The next phase, you'll go into plans and specifications. We actually do detailed plans and specifications for your project, and you get to review those and add, and put into it. And then, again, these are your deliverables, which are just your plans and specifications for bidding. At this point, you're ready to go to bid. You'll have your final plans, your final specifications, and your 100% cost estimate. You'll also know what people you need to have filed sub bids from and what professions you don't need filed sub bids from. And then you go through the bidding process. You bid, you award, you set it up, you start going, you oversee the contract, and you build And then again, I left this slide in here because in this one, it shows you that if the designer fees over $30,000 or if your construction's more than $300,000, you have to use the designer selection law, which is MGL, 7C, 44 and 58. That's required by the state.
Okay.
And I believe that's, that's just another one, too, sorry. And, yeah, questions, quick questions on this one?
I'm glad you mentioned particularly commissioning the building because when we were working on the zero energy bylaw revision, the issue of commissioning all of the things that are associated with getting to zero energy is a significant piece there. There will be a quiz.
So I'm going to take a break now, and the fire chief is going to come over here and talk to you about their fire station study.
He's the tech guy.
Actually, Guilford was the project manager for the feasibility study for the fire station.
Good. Yeah? We're on. Oh, good. So I guess what I'm going to do is just sort of give you an idea of where we are in the long, long process for a new head recorder. My buddy here is the, as I said, is kind of the tech guy. He kind of led us through this. I kind of like to say that, you know, you want to write the end of the story first, where, where, where we're going to end, and this is kind of what this is about. Which one am I using? This one? We're going to take the show on the road.
Sorry about that.
Ah, okay. So this is, actually Guilford talked about this. A gentleman named Bob Mitchell came in, and this is, as I said, a need, need, need assessment. This is one, this is two pages of probably a hundred-page document where he goes through all the needs that you would have for a fire station. Every nook and cranny, every type of thing that we do. I mean, for instance, here, you have administrative, registration walls, mainly miscellaneous space. And we, he sat down with me and my staff and firefighters and went through every piece of what a new building would need, what a new firehouse would need, and he broke it down by square feet, and it was pretty intensive. Took us a good week, week or so, just to kind of go through it all, and then, and then he produced a document. Yeah, risk roll. So, so this is, ah, darn it. Yeah, we're good. So this is what we, what he, we came up, came up with, and this is what really a modern or an up-to-date fire station should look like. As you can see, we've got several spaces for the ad, admin, a place for the public, and our firefighters. And then, then you have the, I guess, I call it the operational side of the house. There's another rendering that shows it on the proposed site. But this, it gives us really enough room to do what we needed to do. Again, Guilford mentioned that both of our buildings aren't adequate for what we're asked, we're asked, we're asked to do, just size, layout, that type thing. It's just inadequate, and this is what a modern firehouse, fire station should look like. Feel free to jump in. Oops. Side analysis. Part of the project was to find a, find an adequate site. And really, Amherst, the way the town is laid out sort of presents a challenge, because the town is long and skinny. And if you're going to get anywhere in town in a reasonable amount of time, you really need to be either somewhere along Route 1616 or along Route 9, somewhere there. And because it's so long, it just makes sense to be south of the town. And this, this show shows response times, it's called a heat map, and it just shows response times to different parts of the town. The other piece of this is the level legend that's off to the side, it's kind of tough to see, but that's how they came up with the site. And again, the town presents challenges with roads, streets, overpasses, that type of thing. So again, it's either you're along Route 9 or you're along 1616. So that kind of, it didn't really hamstring string it, but it kind of narrowed down where we might put a new station. And this will give you an idea of the Raver rating scale. It's tough to see, but there were a number of properties that Bob looked at, and each was rated, came up with a total score based on, it looks like at least 10 criteria. So the DPW site came in as the top, the top site, the site that made the most sense based on this criteria. So I've got a vested interest in him getting a nice new place, so I can steal his land. But again, a lot of work went into it. It's a pretty comprehensive study to find out just where we need to place a new station. So if you can imagine, this is the DPW site. Now, this is how, this is the rendering of how it would be laid out. This one? That one there? There we go. So, you know, what we would have is our fire engines here, ambulance is down here, you know, trucks would go out this way, ambulance would come out and around here, you know, so it just makes sense in terms of efficiency. And firefighter area would be back here, and the support sections would be here, you'd have storage for gear, gear, equipment, medical supplies. You'd have a place to detonate gear, detonate our people if that were in need, and our gear storage. One of the things is, the standard now is that all our turnout gear is not, is not supposed to be in anywhere near the living spaces out in here. So you have a very, very strong separation between the work area here and the living You want to do the talk?
Remember, they're preliminary.
Yeah, preliminary. Yeah. So...
So again, this, based on what we've priced out here and based on, at the time, they actually didn't have a site, so there's no site figures figured in this number either. They just chose generic site cost, and they came up, this is a generic price of what we would be talking about right now. There was no discussion about how to arrange anything. It's all arranged one floor. You can arrange it two floors if you wanted to. There was some discussion about how to arrange some of the bays, but this is still in the preliminary phase. It's based on the analysis of what the department needs to conduct its mission, and then how much space that equipment and those things need inside the building.
Yeah, as you said, there were some plots that they looked at where it would make sense to go up, you know, because you don't have enough space. The DPW site presents the best spot for us, just in terms of the footprint of the building, but it also offers us an area for us to train. There's space there that we don't have now. We have to go out and use, we use rucks to train at times. We can't really train on our own ground and do specific things to what are working entails. So where are, where we are now, as you can see, we're in the design phase now. And the next, the next, the next two steps would take approximately 14 months if we started today. Eight to fourteen months, and then it's the construction piece. But that's, you know, and so that's the next, our next big step for us, so.
We actually did not complete the schematic design phase.
Actually, we are complete with...
Okay, we're done with that, okay? But you can't go on to the next phase unless you know what site you're building on. Is that correct?
We've chosen a site. Someone just happened to be occupying that site.
Right.
Gee, I wonder who that is? And that is who?
Sorry. I got the mic on now.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, we have finished schematic design. We can go on, we have a site that's been recommended, the Public Works Department is the best site. We've been talking about how to shrink the Public Works Department so that we can move these two projects along simultaneously. If they're approved, we could build them at the same time. We would shrink back on our site and let the building begin on the fire station while we begin building on our facility.
Kathy. I don't know whether this would ask for speculation, but you've gotten to this point without actually bidding out the project, correct? I mean, so this is a best guess. So the price we're looking at, would that be likely to be higher, lower, or you don't know?
That price is what the designer, we went through the designer selection process. If we go, the pre-planning section is where we actually selected our designer, we actually did a designer selection. So the designer we select... So the designer we selected, which is Castle and Booth, this is their best estimate if we were to build that project, what your price would be. And that's based on the numbers, which we finished in 2018. So those numbers are relatively, they're not very old. They are actually very fresh. That's what I'm looking for, fresh numbers.
There was an entire bidding process with specifications for the designer, and the DPW Fire Station Advisory Committee did that selection process.
Just real quick, just talk, you know, one of the things the town and we talked about was need. I mean, you can go to our website, we have a series of photos that were done of the entire building. I'd ask anyone to call and stop in and we'll give you a tour. The building was put up in 1929. It's been around a little while. It's a nice built building, it just doesn't work.
When we did the study in 2006, this was even before your time here, Chief Nelson.
Well, the first one was done before, long before all of us were here. 1947 was the first study.
But even as recently as 2006, the recommendation basically was for central fire station. It was cheaper to demolish it and build a new substation or station there than it was to try to renovate it.
If you read the 1947 study, you read the 2003 study, you read the 2006 study, in fact, even the staffing study that was done a couple of years ago, you can take the headers off and they all read the thing. They, that building is too small to fit the needs of the fire department, and it just doesn't work.
Right. Any other questions at this time? Yes, Steve?
Yeah, so I was just curious about zoning, because I didn't see zoning as one of the columns. I see neighborhood impact, but I assume that either be site plan review or special permit?
Yes, there is some permitting that has to go into it, but the one thing about our DPW site is, is that it's already a municipal site. So it's actually already owned by the town, it falls under those rules, which are a little different. So they didn't actually try to compare apples to apples in there. They just noted, if you read their report, it says they noted that you do have permitting process you have to go through.
Yes, Evan?
I have a comment from Mandy Jo.
Okay.
I appreciate the cost estimates, but I want to get back to, I think, what Kathy was saying. When I do a square foot cost on this estimate that I know is really preliminary, it seems really high, somewhere in the $600 to $840 range, depending on which square footage you decide. So I'm curious, is that a normal square foot cost for a fire station? Is that high, is that low? Do you know where the designers got that? And how do we gauge that?
So if you actually, the number is actually on the right side of the, in the comments section, 596, 60 is their storage cost. When you start talking about this building, it is higher than a normal building if you're just building an office building, because of the actual things you have to build into it to make it into the fire station. The chief talked a little bit about separating the gear, the turnout gear, from the living spaces. There's actually three buildings here, and there's actually an airlock between the two sections. When you leave the fire apparatus bay and you walk into the, actually, it's easier if I show the picture. So you leave the fire apparatus bay and then you walk into this section here, you are in a self-contained airlock system. All the air in that system goes through purifiers and is sucked out and controlled in that one section.
Negative pressure.
Yes, negative pressure, which pulls it in, makes sure everything comes into it. And all the, any of the vapors, any of the chemicals the firefighters were exposed to that's off-gassing from their suits, which is off-gassing from them, is collected and then processed out. So that's actually a cost that's a little above and beyond a normal building. This would be like building one of the labs at UMass, where you're trying to make sure that you have positive pressure in there and you're controlling the chemicals they're working in. One of the things that they pointed out a lot, and I always wondered about myself, but firefighters have a, they have a history of having a lot of nasty diseases, and it comes from going to a fire. You come back from the fire, you take your gear off, you throw it at the bottom of your rack, and you take a nap, and your gear is sitting there off-gassing all this stuff, and you're sitting there sleeping, or laying there sleeping, and taking it all in. So that's why there's this one special section, and that actually is probably the biggest cost increaser in this building, is having that section. You have special laundry, you have special storage areas, and you have a special decontamination area, kind of all together in this area.
And that is a national standard, really. And it's actually promulgated by the end of the NFBA, right down, right down the road. The third piece is the admin section here. So as Gilford said, three separate buildings, three separate functions. Hence, I believe that that's where that, you know, that increase in cost comes. But you really can't escape that if, you know, as he said, this is not an office building. And it's used 24/7, 365, so.
Isn't there also a special decontamination coming off of ambulances?
Yes, yes. And when, you know what, actually, I'm glad you brought that up. Because we do EMS as well, we have a separate area where we'll take care of those type of biohazards and that type of thing. Dispose, dispose, you know, that. You have to keep all our drugs and equipment separate and not exposed to any type of contamination. So you've got almost three and a half buildings put in one. And again, it's, you know, it's not, this is not a strip mall. It's a fire station, and it's highly specialized. And that's just the world we live in now.
Any other questions? Yes, Pat?
Since the 1947 study is almost as old as I am, I want to thank you. I want to thank you and the current firefighters and fighters before you for keeping us safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, let's move on to, I guess we have one other presentation on fire. This is the tour?
No.
No, we're going on to DPW?
Yeah, like, well, the tour, the tour of the station, that's 65 slides. That's a lot of, and it's all on, it's on our website, or stop in and visit.
We are also going to arrange an actual visit to various facilities when the weather is better and we aren't expecting snow. So, moving on.
So the next talk, the presentation we're going to have is on the DPW. DPW proposal was finished in 2016, so we're already three years old in this. So it's, some of the numbers, there is some dated material here as far as the numbers go. Brief history, we're kind of like the Bang Center. We're one of the few town buildings that functions now not in the capacity it was built for. The Bang Center was built as a school and then converted. We were built as a trolley barn and converted. I left out the slide that was inside the trolley barn, I apologize for that, but that's actually in the counselor's packet when you see the pictures of inside the building. The four gentlemen who are working on trolley motors, that was, that's what this building was used for for quite a while before we took it over. Just that's the history of what we've been doing. So we did the same thing. We took what we do, vehicle maintenance, traffic lights, electrical, administration, highway, parks and rec, water, the parts of the sewer which are in the main building. And we went through and we kind of listed them all out, and then listed out our equipment, listed out our people, and listed out what we needed to do for each, and the spaces we needed for each of those functions. And we came up with schematic drawings like this and a table as well. We came up with some preliminary layouts, how we would lay stuff out in a barn. And then we came up with some needs. These are the square foot needs. The original needs are in the middle, reduced are on the right. We said, well, that's a lot of space, can we reduce it? That's what happened. We reduced down 5,000, I think it's, no, we reduced down just a little bit, 4,000, 6,000 square feet is what we reduced down to. So, and then that's basically how we set ourselves up. Administration, staff support. Staff support is like the fire department, except it's not as complicated as the fire department, but it is lockers for your gear. So you come to work, you can change clothes and put on your work clothes. At the end of work, you can take your clothes off, shower, and go home clean. One of the funniest things is when I did a sewer call in North Hampton, I came home and it was really late at night, I came home, my wife met me at the door and said, "You're going in the garage." And I actually, she said, "Your bathrobe's in the garage, and there's a towel in the garage. Change your clothes off and come inside and shower." We had that same problem. We do have chemicals, we are exposed to biohazards when we do some work, so we do need to clean up. But it's not as, it's not to the detail that the fire department has. So there's showers, there's cleaning areas and so forth. So that's the staff support. Highway, the big trucks, treeing grounds, we want to move the, our proposal is to move the barn at the high school to the new facility and consolidate. We want to do that for two reasons. One's management reason, just to have everybody together and to have consolidation in the same services for the staff and be able to communicate better. The second one is, is that we want to redevelop community field, and here we have this little industrial site sitting in the middle of community field. It wasn't supposed to get that big. We weren't supposed to have that much equipment there, but it has gotten bigger and bigger as time has gone on, and it detracts from, if you're going there for recreation or going there to the high school, it's like, whose construction company is that over there? So we want to move that out, and we brought that to the main building. The water department, their administrative offices function out of our office. That's the distribution crew, and that's the meter crew and a couple other crews that work in the water, they work out of there. Maintenance, we do all the vehicle maintenance for our building, for our vehicles. We also do some inspections for the entire town, we do all vehicle inspections for the entire town. And then we do, we talked about when we do this building, maybe consolidating and bringing in some of the scattered maintenance that's around town. The schools do some maintenance, the police do some maintenance, the fire do some maintenance. We thought of bringing that stuff in and consolidating it. We don't have really room for that now because our bays are, maintenance bays are too small. And if you look at the pictures in the big presentation, you'll see they're much too small. And then we just need to store our equipment. Storing the equipment takes up the biggest space. Storing our equipment is also the place where we can, where we can actually stage how we build this building. We kind of need the stuff at the top, we need some of the vehicle storage immediately, and then we can stage and add on as we need to and as funds become available for the additional vehicle storage. We have some vehicles that have to be inside or else they freeze and they're not useful. The Vector, the big truck with the elephant snout on the front, the kindergartners from the Common School call it the elephant trunk, truck, elephant truck, that has to be inside because there's water inside of it. There's a couple other vehicles that have things like that inside that can't freeze, they have to be inside. So you can, this is one of the few buildings, actually it's the only building, where you can talk about staging, how you do it. When we started this process, we had nine sites. Actually, there was a 10th one, it went really fast and was taken off the table. We did all, analyzed all these sites and came up with a chart, rated them all. The top three... I took that slide out, sorry. Top three when we did this study, Fort River, which we've been taken off the table, the town wants to do something else there if they don't do a school there. School is number one, something else besides DPW is number two, something else besides something else is number three, about number 1 million down the list is DPW site. So Fort River is never going to be a DPW site. So people keep saying that, we're never going to go there, it's just not going to happen. Second site was off of Old Farm Road, which is number four on the list. That's now conservation land. The third site is for sale still, but I believe there's a purchase and sale agreement going on, and that's number seven, Ball Lane. Those were the top three sites. We're still looking for a site, we have a couple more which weren't in the original study. We looked at all, when we did site evaluations, we looked at all these items. We looked at, one of the biggest things we looked at was permitting and effects on our neighbors. So that was a big piece in that one. We are a 24-hour operation. We're not, unlike the fire department, who gets a call and leaves. If we come into work, a snowstorm, someone's there all the time during the snowstorm, and we make a lot of noise, and it's a bit of a disturbance at times. This is just a rough, if you take all the blocks and you just block them in, a very rough schematic of what the layout might look like for the building. That's how we came up with the site size, the minimum site size we need. And then the thing to remember is, is that the big piece in the middle is the one that can be kind of staged. And then for prices, we came up with a, actually, I might have taken the big price off. 375 square, $375 a square foot is what we came up with. And then these at the time were sites we compared ourselves to. These were DPWs that Weston and Sampson were working on at the time. Orne and Norwood were very similar to those. Medford was a little different, they don't do as much water work, I think, as we do. And where we are in the process right now, we finished up in March of 2018, which actually we finished up more in 2016, I should have changed that to 16. We're waiting to go to the next phase, we just need to move forward with that. We are looking at a couple sites, and the site, for us, our site has not really been determined yet. So we are kind of still waiting for that, and we're still working on that piece. And that's it for this one, if you have any questions.
Questions? Yes. Pat?
The big price? You said you left it off?
Yeah, I don't know why I left that off.
Approximate?
It's approximately 35 million, if you want. Okay. This is my million day, I will talk in millions, not...
Additional questions? Yes, Shalini?
I'm just curious if the DPW building could be on the same site as the fire station?
We could, if the site is big enough. We can't be on the existing site we're proposing for the fire station because of the river behind us. The Fort River is behind us, and there's this 200-foot magical line which is there to protect the resource area of the river. If we take that 200-foot line on the DPW site, the DPW already encroaches onto that line, you can't add anything beyond towards the river. So the site is almost exclusively filled with the fire station, and we don't fit unless you could figure out more land in that area.
You need about, what, eight acres for this?
We need eight.
For DPW?
Eight is why it's in the study, if you read the study, it says eight. And then if you really want to have nice buffers, you might want to go with 10 acres.
And fire requires how many acres? About three?
It's, if you take out the training part, I think it was one and a half, and then the rest is three, I believe, yes.
Okay. Kathy?
It's in the study.
Yeah.
I'm looking at the cost chart that was in our pack.
What is that number?
And there's, you know, you said around 35, but you have a line called soft costs that adds, you know, so we've got for three different sites and unconsolidated, so there's a bottom line that's quite a bit higher than 35 if you do soft costs. I have a question... I have a question of soft costs. And my second, in looking at the pictures, the place where the vehicles would be inside, is that, are those, could those be simple, I'm going to use the wrong terms, but simple metal with a cement floor that just keeps them out of the elements? And would that be less expensive than the visual of the other place that looked quite elegant, like it was an indoor building with beautiful bays of the, some existing world?
But think of the great picnic you'd have in that big one. We showed you the picnic we have in the other building, it's kind of tight, if we had a, no. So the answer to that question, soft costs are things, are furnishings, furniture, those type of things that go inside the building. Do you put carpet in? Do you put tile in? Those are things that really haven't been decided, so those are things that are also possible, that you could put in basics and then upgrade as you go along. We could take our old furniture we have now and use that furniture. We, we are like the ultimate take it or leave furniture group. The guys, it's not going to be appreciated with the DPW. It'd be nice if we moved into a new building and have new, but there are things that could be, we could adjust the cost and we could work on to make them more compatible. Just like in the fire department, you have three sections of the fire department, in the DPW, you really, you really need three sections. We need an office section and a staff section which is climatized so that it's comfortable to work in. Work in, take a shower in, do those type of things. Not all at the same time, but in your right place. You need a section to keep vehicles above freezing. So the vehicles I talked about that can't freeze, the sewer vac, a couple other trucks that can't freeze, you need a section of vehicle storage which we keep above freezing. So that's above 50, or around 50, not above 50, around 50. And then you just need a place for covered storage. So yes, you can start out with covered storage which has no heat in it, it's just out of the, it's out of the wind, it's out of the snow, it's out of the rain. And then work from there later on to add heating to it or add what you want to, to it. So that, yes, that's how we talk about staging, that's where you get the staging.
One of the other things that came up during these various studies, and that is, you reduce the life of a vehicle when it's left outside by at least three years, if you're lucky. Other questions on this? I'm going to actually suggest we take a break before we do the street scan, five minutes, and then we're going to actually look at the horizontal issues of the town, right? Yeah, okay. So as we were looking at the capital projects, there are many people who have suggested that our infrastructure is like a fifth project, and so we asked Mr. Bauchaman to have Guilford, Mr. Mauring, to come back and talk about our streets and our infrastructure sidewalks.
So the council has seen this slide before, it's a little different, but not that much different. So, street scans is what we use to prioritize and scan and manage the roads in town. It has a vehicle which dri... Okay, I should cut this a little shorter. So it has a vehicle that drives around, there's LiDAR, there are scanners, there's actually the little motion detectors which you have in your cell phones, which can tell vibrations, so you can tell how bumpy the road is, all this stuff. Comes up with a lot of numbers and tells you the condition of our roads. Again, we showed this last time, this is the, this is the breakdown of our road conditions. We're trying to, we want to be at 70, PCI is 70 or higher. 100 is great, just like in school. Zero are no cookies, as we called it in school, no cookies. You have to take the class over again, it's not what we want to be at. So, we're averaged about 63, and this was, and the scan was done two years ago now. So we've actually had a lot of deterioration since then, but this is the kind of breakdown of our roads. As we talk about roads, the thing to remember is, is a road is a lot like a living being because it's affected by the elements as much as we, people are affected by the elements. So when the weather's rough, roads get worse heating. If it gets really, really cold and stays cold all winter, that's far better for the roads than heating and cooling and heating and cooling, just like us. We don't like it when it gets really too hot and get really too cold. We like it to stay one temperature, usually about 70, and everything's good, right? So the roads are the same way. This is a base, a breakdown of our segments of roads and how they fall into the categories. Again, to the far right is 85 to 100, which is like excellent, very good roads. 70 to 85 is good roads, and then you start deteriorating as you come down. So we actually have four segments when we did this scan, which were zeros, or less than Our weighted, our weighted survey of the whole town, it was 63 when we did this two years ago, 28% of our roads have structural damage. We estimated that we needed $16 million just to repave the roads. And then if we put in contingency and police costs and some other costs that we use, there's another, you just add another $10 million to cover those costs. So that's kind of our backlog for roads. If we actually were to budget, this was based on, two years ago, if we actually were to budget these numbers here, we'd be able to bring our PCI, PCI is on the left side, we'd be able to bring our PCI up to 70 if we used $2.5 million a year to pave our roads after four years. Now we're a little behind this now because this is two years ago, and yes, we've had some deterioration, a lot of deterioration. We've had a lot of freezing and thawing, and we're not helping, our winter maintenance and our winter, our winter techniques for keeping the cars moving in the winter are not helping our roads. By having a lot of salt on the roads, keeping the water flowing, keeping water moving around and not just freezing and staying frozen, we're actually helping to accelerate, I think, that freeze-thaw cycle, which we've been noticing over the last few years since we're using all salt. So we're not really helping with the weather, our weather conditions. So we're a little behind, this is just a, if things had stayed perfect, this is just where we are. So we're at $27 million is when we first did the study, we're probably a little more right now, I don't know the exact number. And then as we move along, hopefully we'll catch up. But that's the fifth, fifth project is, that's the fifth project as we were talking about the infrastructure for the roads. And that's kind of what it is. We actually do, so we have $800,000 to get from Chapter 90. Chapter 90 is 800 and some thousand dollars a year. The town has been putting an extra amount of money in, we put in almost a million dollars, we put $953,000 last year to help us with this. And then we do a lot of roads, water and sewer projects in the roads, and when the water and sewer department cuts the road to make a repair, the water and sewer department pays to fix the road. So Amherst Woods is being resurfaced now, and most of that's coming from sewer funds because we were doing sewer work in that whole section and tearing the roads up for sewer work. We're going to go, we have a couple more roads we're doing water work on next year and they'll get resurfaced with water money. So it's not really fair to make the road people pay for when we're doing the water and sewer work. So we, sometimes we spend around $3 million, but it's not a consistent $3 million. And sometimes that $3 million is not in the right spot. If we're doing a road or sewer project that's in a road that's in decent condition, we may end up cutting that road a lot, a lot sooner than we want to, just to deal with the water and sewer issue. So that's kind of how we handle it. The last, last slide I want to show you on this is actually separate.
Lynn? Lynn?
Yes, Paul?
Well, Guilford was looking for that. I do want to emphasize that last year, and you'll see this again this year, the town has moved off a lot of the capital requests from departments so that we carve out as much money as possible for road repairs. Typically, historically, the town has done about $300,000, and Guilford mentioned, we're nearly, we almost got to $1 million this year for road repairs, and we're moving in that same direction for the budget you will receive on May 1st. So we're trying to get there. It just means, there's just a lot of balancing act, and we'll be reviewing this with JCPC.
Okay. Thank you. Guilford?
So I was asked if there's a list. That's the famous where your bike calls up and says, "My street has a pothole, can you fix it?" And we say, "Yes, it's on the list." Well, there actually is a list for big road projects. This is our, this is our list, we kind of keep running for big projects. So at the top is the annual, annual paving for last year, which we haven't finished, we'll finish it up in the spring. West Bay Road sidewalks, that's a project, a large project that's going on in the spring. It got moved off. We have to put together our 2019 paving list for this year, which, we don't really have a final number on what we're spending, so we haven't put together the final list of roads we're doing. East Hadley Road multi-use path is being funded by Community Development Block Grant Money, CDBG. That's the sidewalk, the big sidewalk we're doing on East Hadley Road. Mill Street Bridge, that's a state project, the blue ones are funded by the state DOT. That project is going on. North Hampton Road resurfacing is underway in the planning phases, it's scheduled for about 2021 in the state list, and they're going to actually pay for that. North Hampton Road, Route 9, from University Drive all the way up to South Pleasant Street. There's some widening going on, there's some sidewalks going on, there's some shoulder work going on. North Hampton Road resurfacing, we're working on that project, wait, wait. Belchtown Road resurfacing, we're working on that project as a TIP project, we proposed that to the state, and the state's approved it, and it's going through the planning and design process. That's from Southeast Street all the way to Belchertown. Road widening, sidewalks, some shoulder work. The state hopefully will pay for that as well. These are just rough budgetary numbers in those three. North Pleasant Street and Pine Street intersection, and the Sunderland Road, Montague Road intersection. Those are the two that are in yellow here. They had been broken apart, now we're kind of mushing them back together to do the, to do the analysis of the intersection concepts we have. So that's going on right now, and we're supposed to have a report from them by the end of the month on what the best concepts and how the intersections work together. And then once that's done, we can start moving that project forward and trying to do, decide what we want to do next in that project. But that's the North Amherst intersection, mushed together both pieces. Station Road Bridge is in there. The one in red, which Kate reads very well, is a parking lot, that's the Main Street parking lot in front of Town Hall, which is on hold, I understand. We did a lot of preliminary work on that, so it's on our list. The North Pleasant Street parking lot, which is a lot previously known as CVS parking lot, which we call North Pleasant Street parking lot now. The two property owners there were talking about resurfacing the lot, and we thought we would help do our piece as well and resurface the entire lot. That's kind of being a concept being floated around, that's as far as that's gone, it's just the concept. North Pleasant Street, the pet upgrades on North Pleasant Street is a project from the roundabout at Eastman Lane going all the way to Pine Street. And that's to upgrade the sidewalks, maybe change the sidewalks from two 5-foot sidewalks to one 6, 8, 10-foot sidewalk, and then maybe one 5-foot sidewalk on the other side. The West Street and Pomeroy intersection was a project which was put together many years ago, and is kind of sitting on the shelf, it's already put together, it just needs to be dusted off, and we can change the intersection at Pomeroy and West Street. East Pleasant Street upgrades, I should say pedestrian upgrades, sorry about that. That's for doing sidewalks on East Pleasant Street from where they end now to Pine Street again. And we need to do the survey before we can start the work on that. North Pleasant Street through UMass, that's a project the university wants to do with the town, and we were going to kind of change, change a little bit how that's set up. So we have basically, well, it's going to have some type of bike lane, travel lane, and the UMass big sidewalks, it'll be UMass big sidewalks. There's a water line that runs through there, we're going to work on as well. Route 9 and University Drive intersection, that's a state project, the state's been working on this. As I said once before in a meeting, there's three intersections that came up on the really bad intersection list from the state several years ago. This is the third one. There was Pine in North Pleasant, and there was Meadow at 116, this is the third, 19 in University Drive. The state's working on that. South Amherst Common, that's come back up as something people want us to look at, to make some changes to the South Amherst Common and do some design improvements there. And then Mill Lane, we've been requested to look at Mill Lane because Groff Park is in there, and we're making changes to Groff Park, and how to connect Groff Park back to West Street, and then to the new sidewalks we're doing on East Hadley Road. That was kind of, that's what that project is. It might grow, people would like us to pave Mill Lane, and that whole project may grow a little bit. So as, as street stuff goes, none of these are included in the 27 and $16 million number. But if we did these, some of that number would get smaller, but it's not included in that bigger number. When we do things with the state, doing things with the state costs us more. It costs $50,000, or actually $45,000 for me to have a surveyor come in and survey North Pleasant Street from Pine Street back to the campus. It's going to cost me $160,000 to survey from Southeast Street to the town line for the project, on Belchtown Road project. It's about twice the length of the survey, but it's not twice the cost. So doing things with the state, because you want to get free state money, there ain't no such thing from the state as free. You're paying, and you're going to probably pay more than you would normally pay to get that free state money. Just, it's one of my concepts in life, just to remember that, there's no free money. So that's overall road projects. So I guess I'm ready for questions.
Okay. Questions? Yes, Shalini.
I was curious about the criteria used, and I've been talking about that for a while, like how do you prioritize, how do we prioritize which projects get done first?
That's a good question, because this is just the leftover list from before we had the TAC, and before the TAC got started talking about it. The two projects the TAC started talking about and started to prioritize and started to add on to this list, if you look at the far right corner, it says TAC priority for 2019, they chose the North Pleasant Street pet upgrades, and they chose the East Pleasant Street pet upgrades as their number one priority that they'd like to see money allocated towards. So what, how these projects start is, is there's usually requests, and in the past it was usually from the town manager's office and from us talking that this road really needs something done to it. And that put it on the list, or the state came forward with the project, and that got it on the list. And that's how it went forward. Now we're going to see that the TAC will have more of an input of taking the requests they get from residents and flushing out something and saying, "We should spend some money on this." And we're going to put it on our list as a recommendation that goes into the capital plan. And then the capital plan goes through its process and we see if money comes out. Is that?
Additional questions? Yes, Alyssa?
Thank you for the hundreds of pages of slides that we had uploaded, but we don't have this one, unfortunately. And so when we do get that one, I wonder if you could flush it out, I realize that requires additional time. But with the words you just gave us in terms of point A to point B, because I'm, sorry, but I don't think we're all going to remember which section of each road that would be. So I wonder if you have either a longer version of this you could send to us that has another field that says "from here to here" and "from here to here," because this is really useful to be able to refer to.
No, I can lie that on. It's all, it's all kind of burned into our brains, so we just know. Sorry.
Yes, Kathy?
I, also I can't see this, so I'm glad Alyssa sent it to us, but you, I think you said that what you have up here is not part of the road backlog that we've got, and so the dollar sound numbers you were showing on the 800,000 plus another, so one and a half million a year-ish, that doesn't include these costs, or does that budget that the town's been allocating, does it include sidewalks or intersection fixes?
Anything that's an improvement beyond just repaving the road, it's not included in that 16 or 27 million dollar number, I'll just call it 27 million dollar number of road repairs. Any sidewalk improvement, any intersection improvement, that's not included in that number. So you won't be able to take these numbers to the right if you add those numbers up as cost estimates, they're, they're a lot more than, they don't match up. So these numbers aren't included in that at all.
And then they're, they're also not coming out, or if they're not budgeted in the, you know, the budget projections you showed us, that doesn't have these in them either?
Those aren't those either at all. That's why there's two separate things. So these are the bigger projects, which have more improvements, and this is, this is like paving your road, repairing a road on steroids. You're usually getting new sidewalks, you're usually getting some type of changes to the intersections, you're usually getting some type of enhancement beyond just paving the road. The other list is just paving the road.
Yes, Dorothy.
I realize that adding these is very expensive, but I applaud you doing it, because I think that it will affect the lives of an awful lot of people in the town and the whole quality of life. So I hope we can figure out some way to include it without going broke.
Other comments or questions at this time? Shalony?
Just a clarification, when you say roads, does it include bike paths as well?
What includes bike paths?
The, the, these 16 million, because sidewalks is not included, but bike paths, which are part of the road, is that included?
If you're talking about the bike, bike accommodation on the roadway, it's included in the bike accommodation if it exists already. So like, East Pleasant Street is wide enough to have bike lanes on it now, so that's included in the 16, 27 million dollars. But Pine Street, not Pine Street, Henry Street, does not have bike lanes on it. So bike lanes on Henry Street are not included in that 16 to 27 million dollars.
Additional questions? I'd like to open it for public comment and ask it for a show of hands of those people who would like to comment. We are going to limit you to three minutes. Please come up and state your name and the area that you'd like to comment on. And let's start over here. You have to press the button in the center. Yes?
Where it says push. I'm Alex LaFave. I'm a trustee with the Jones Library, so I'll be speaking on behalf of the library project. I don't have any prepared comments, but I heard some really good questions from the council, so I just wanted to take a second to give you my thoughts. One of the questions was about, could we reorganize the existing space that we have? And I think that's an excellent, cost-effective question. So I think it's important that people know that the MBLC does, the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners, does provide a resource to the library, which the library did take advantage of prior to applying for the grant, to bring somebody in to look at our existing space, to see if we could reorganize it, to take better advantage of the space for our community needs. And the conclusion that the MBLC came to was that we could not, in fact, use our existing space. So the second question that was asked was, can we, can we do with our existing library? If we make the changes that the library director talked about in Phase 1 and perhaps Phase 2, and we pave for it through JCPC process, can we live with that as a community? And, you know, I think the answer to that is a difficult one, because libraries serve the function of being the great equalizer, right? They are the social justice tool of a town. And unfortunately, our existing library, without the expansion, the people in our community who are being left behind are our populations that are most in need. So, for example, right now, children's programming, which is our most popular programming, we turn families away from our programming, because we don't have enough space to accommodate all of the people who are interested in that programming. Our English as a Second Language programs are some of our most popular programs. We have a long waiting list. If anyone wants to be a tutor, I'm going to put a plug in, because we always need more people. But those programs, what winds up happening is the ESL programs wind up taking the public meeting spaces, because we don't have enough space to accommodate people in the library. So our meeting spaces, which are taken advantage of almost every single day, wind up not being available to as many people who might want to take advantage of public meeting spaces, which I think are important, to have access to free meeting spaces in a library, and we lose that. Our teen spaces, you know, you have two issues. One, we want to bring teens into the library, we want to teach them about libraries, and we don't have a space that does that right now, putting them in a basement. They may think it's cool, but I don't think it's a good way to teach them to be a good citizen. But more importantly, our teen collection is very, very small. Youth adult books have doubled in terms of sales in the last 10 years. The largest group, 70% of people who purchase are 18 to 64-year-olds. So they're not even teens, and we don't have the space to accommodate that kind of growth. So we, we have somebody to direct the programs, but not to accommodate the growth. So I could, I'm sure you're, computers, I could go on, right? We don't, if you go into the library on any certain day, you will see a large number of low-income homeless, home insecure people who, their only access to the internet, their only access to computers, is at the library. We offer programs for college education, for continuing education, for music, for art. There are unlimited resources available to people for free at the library, and we don't have enough computer terminals to meet those needs. So what becomes a difficult question is, do we as a community feel the library is our social justice support for our community? And if the answer is yes, then I would say our existing building doesn't meet that. Thanks.
Thank you. There was another comment back there? Actually, okay. Yes, ma'am.
You have to push the button, and the green light goes on.
Yeah, it's, oh, okay. It is working. All right. I'm Nancy Bear. I'm a member of the District 1 Neighborhood Association in North Amherst. In the interest of bringing the, this is just a little over one minute. In the interest of bringing the concerns of North Amherst District 1 residents to the council, I make these points, which are taken from a letter to town councillors from Met Gage. Many of us feel North Amherst infrastructure issues are overdue for attention. We cannot walk over the Mill River Bridge after five years of the bridge being out. Our library does not have a restroom and is not accessible to people with disabilities. The traffic light at the Meadow and Pine Street and Route 63, Montague Road intersection is an ancient signal which keeps traffic backed up for 15 to 20 minutes every day at rush hour. Many families on East Pleasant Street walk on this well-traveled road without sidewalks. Two excellent steps in addressing these challenges would be a smart traffic light allowing left turns at the Meadow-Pine Street-Route 63-Montague Road intersection, a $50,000 for a sidewalk survey of East Pleasant Street, the first step in building sidewalks. And I was encouraged to hear that these two items are on the list. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. There was another comment back here, sir?
I'm having trouble understanding the distribution on here. I was looking at the numbers 19 and 21 and concluded that that's 40%, but the graphic shows me far in excess of 50% of that area shown. So I'm somewhat, I'm led to believe that that large area, the majority of the chart shows me that roads are 85 or better for the pavement condition index. But the, I, that, I believe is somewhat misleading, and if we go down to the next part, the breakdown by mileage and number segments, we'll see that in actuality, those two categories that are graphically depicted up there, looking like 50% or more, are really 6.15 miles, which are 10, 11.1 miles of a 101 miles of roads, which is 10%. That's not 50-something percent, like the slide led me to believe. But I, if I go back to the slide, I'm wondering if perhaps the, those are just segments of the sampling that were done, and so that actually, the segments vary in size on the street scan. They can be 150 feet, they can be 2,000 feet, the segments. So maybe the number of actual samplings really would lead to that conclusion. But I think that's a, that graphic is not a good one to assess and say, oh, lots of green, we're great, when in fact, it's only 10% of them are in that, that color category, really, if you go by miles. And that's what us drivers are concerned about, miles, not segments of statistical samples. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Other comments from in here? Yes?
Yep, that's on. My name's Julian Heinz, and I wanted to first say thank you to Mr. Nelson for all his work and his department's work in town for keeping us safe. And I next like to thank Mr. Maureen for the work that he's probably going to have to do tomorrow. And then, my second comment is that I would like to make sure that we have some way of preserving the fire station downtown, that I understand it is sort of falling out of its time of usability, yet at the same time, I think that it's an important historic figure in our town, and is a very pretty architectural building, and is visually appealing. So whether we build a fire station in South Amherst or not, I think it's important to preserve that area and not have demolition there. I'd be very disappointed if we demolished it or made large changes to the front of it, but I have heard the ideas of an art studio, which I thought was pretty interesting. It could also be turned into things like a coffee shop, or, like, I know Belchertown has a historic fire museum, which I think might be a cool thing there. All right? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other comments at this time? Okay, then with the council's agreement, we're going to move on to the next agenda item. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a discussion item. It's regarding a proposed fourth standing committee of the council, and it is labeled at this time, the Community and Economic Development Committee. We are not taking a motion at this time, although there could be a decision to do a motion, but I am actually going to call on both Steve and Dorothy to head this discussion.
Well, we are very pleased to introduce the new proposed Town Council Standing Committee of Community and Economic Development. And I noticed that in the material, in preference to the charter, not in the charter, but the description beforehand, it discussed some things which were not clarified in the charter. And it mentioned that the election of council members would promote democracy by representing what the voters want, providing the central focus now lacking on what we want the town to look like. And the hope was that we would now have a public and comprehensive conversation about issues regarding zoning and the master plan, and to quote the text, "Instead of important planning and zoning decisions being made piecemeal and out of sight." So economic development and vitality are goals that we all share, but economic development is closely related to the attractiveness of the town and its quality of life. We want to grow, yet to keep the unique qualities of Amherst as a New England college town, and to be a town that reflects its intellectual, progressive nature, as well as its historical and cultural roots. So the description of the committee, okay, I will read the committee. I have to hold this button down every, every moment. "To advise the council on matters which impact sustainable planning, land use, zoning, agriculture, open space and recreation, infrastructure, housing, design review, transportation, neighborhood stabilization or revitalization, historic preservation, art and culture, and economic development, in order to build on Amherst's special character and to improve the quality of life. In furtherance of these objectives, the committee shall analyze, research, and review recommendations for changes in the zoning by law and other land use laws, and collaborate with the planning board on master plan updates. The committee shall also consider relevant issues and conduct research on the relationship between the town and the educational institutions, and other partners within the town, to develop policies and programs that will enhance economic development."
So that was well said. So we, this issue's been discussed at full council meetings, but then also at our retreat. So we had a great discussion at the retreat, and Dorothy and I did our best to weigh through, or go through, what were sometimes conflicting opinions of the councillors, and come up with a document that we think, that we hope that the full council can take action on at our next meeting.
Are there comments or questions? Andy?
So I guess that my question is in the very first line, and what sustainable planning is, what, how that's defined. But before answering it, I want to also just point out that those of us who are thinking about financial structure of the town and the financial health of the town, I think that my, my view of sustainable is something that is financial, creates a town that is in itself financially sustainable, which means that we have to make sure that we're looking at planning as something that's stimulating tax growth. And that's why I was curious as to what sustainable planning laws and how it relates to the continued development of taxable property that can give us some relief without burdening current taxpayers.
Shalony?
Yeah, I'd like to add to what Andy said in terms of sustainability. I am curious to hear the definition of that, but the way I think of sustainability would be to include equity, environment, and economy. They kind of work together for us to have a sustainable community that can be enjoyed by all residents. So it has to include the equity piece, it has to include the environment and, you know, the economy that Andy pointed out.
Kathy?
I'll stay on this same point. I think each of us are interpreting this in our own ways, but I've been really struck by planning to date in Amherst, and this is not dissimilar to what I see in New York City, that you can't assume just if you expand and get new taxable property, that you get a net positive impact on the town budget, because we may incur high public costs for that private development. So what I've seen some places do, and I recently looked at Dartmouth's Hanover, for an example, they make any new development do a public impact statement. Is it going to need a new road? Is it going to need a sidewalk? Is it going to have to re, so up in North Amherst, will we have to reprogram everything because we're already too crowded? And that that developer has to pay a substantial share of that, so it doesn't be public investment in private. So, you know, you're looking at New York, and it never gets ahead of the game by putting a new piece of real estate in, because it's done tax breaks, it hasn't done the extra things, and we don't do that kind of accounting that says we get something here, but we paid something there. So if the word sustainable can be that way of thinking, you know, that it's not just the character and quality of life, but if we're looking for a net yield, you better think in advance rather than after the fact.
Additional comments? Yes, Steve?
So I wasn't sure if these were rhetorical questions or, but in the interest of trying to summarize our discussion, we debated whether or not to include the word sustainable, because in many ways, in a community like Amherst, it seems unnecessary, because this committee will only be as good as the, you know, basically the members that are on it and the council that it reports to, plus all the other boards. And we assume that sustainability, the triad that you've mentioned, is pretty the triad that you've mentioned, is pretty much in the DNA of, you know, the community. So, I think that we wanted, we did keep it in there as sort of a reminder, and absolutely, there are 13 different definitions of what that is, we all have. But, so, we've gotten to the first line, but, so that was our thing. So, we did, I know there was a, someone had come up with the idea that sustainability should be in the name of the committee, and we debated that between the both of us, and we decided not to in this version, but we're only two out of 13, so if there's some comments on that, we're all ears.
Darcy?
That was me. Yeah, I, I think it would make sense to have it in the title, since it is covering all those different areas that would be in the master plan, and since our current master plan, you know, starts right out with words to the effect that sustainability is our overarching value. So, I think it would be good to have that there, and I think it would be great to have a separate sentence, sort of indicating what Shalani just said about the three, three ways in which we are seeking sustainability in all these different areas.
A comment from Mandy Jo.
Okay, Mandy Jo?
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna try and, I'm gonna jump around, so that I don't have to do this too often. I am concerned, moving down to the third and fourth line, the design review and historic preservation portions, how that would intersect with the design review board, and I think there's one that does historic preservation, too, a committee that does that. We've seen it on demolition delays. And how their regulatory function would intersect with this committee's charge to advise on matters related to design review. So, that's something I'm unclear about. I'm also unclear about the overarching advise on matters. Is that general matters? Is it things that other committees bring to the council? Is it bylaws? Is specifically bylaws, or only bylaws, and things like that? The appointing authority, I believe, would need to be the president of the town council, since it would be a committee of the council. And then, just as, as chair of the governance committee, as the governance committee is seeking a uniform for committee charge, a uniformed structure, I'd just recommend, maybe before any action is done on this, a referral to that, so that we could put it in that uniform structure. Thanks.
Yes, Darcy?
I really like what Kathy said. I'm, that's, in my mind, that's in this description, but it may be that there needs to be some way of making it clearer, because what we're trying to do in this committee is to connect the dots, to bring the pieces together, to put things in context, not to do things just separately. And new things that come in, new buildings, that may, for example, there may be sidewalk problems, there may be a need for new parking, there are things that might come with it, that we would want the project, but we have to make sure that, that the whole thing is looked at.
Okay. Additional comments? Yes, Pat?
A small comment. My colleague Steve said that in the DNA of Amherst, we talk, we have equity, and we're concerned for the environment and the economy. And I would say those are aspirational goals, that we have not reached those goals as a community, and we need to look at ourselves quite clearly, because if you can't see it, you can't change it.
Okay. Additional comments? Evan?
Just a question for the authors, about what exactly is meant by neighborhood stabilization or revitalization?
So, an example would be the pressures on the university area neighborhoods. And I think that that concern comes up mostly in Amherst, in terms of, you know, in that particular context. It also comes in the, into the context of some of the apartment complexes. Those would be, those are a couple of examples that we discussed.
Did you have a follow-on question, Evan? Comment?
So, that's the concerns. So, could you just maybe give me an idea of how you envision this committee would, would address those concerns, and what it means to stabilize a neighborhood?
Darcy?
I'll make a few thoughts. Well, of course, that means active code enforcement, citizen engagement. It means, in terms of older existing communities, listening to the residents, seeing if there is something that is needed that would make it a better place to live. Just not taking neighborhoods for granted, making sure that part of a strong town has strong neighborhoods, and that we would try to do the things that would bring that about.
My concern with this remains that economic development is gonna get lost in this long list, and I'm wondering what the two authors feel about that, whether, and one thought was that there might be a subcommittee, or some kind of smaller body that would focus on this issue, but when I look at this, I become concerned that economic development is gonna get lost in the mix.
I believe that we had a discussion, that there was talk of creating another town, town committee, not a town council committee, but a town committee on economic development, because we looked, and you said, that really wasn't being covered that well. So, there would be strong work and support that would be feeding into this committee, or we could support their work.
So, while I don't disagree with the things that are written here, and I appreciate the comments others have had, I still don't understand what you're actually gonna do when you sit down and meet for the first time, because I'm feeling like, I understand it if a proposal comes here, and so we start talking about things based on public comment, based on meetings that we've had, et cetera, and we say, you know, this isn't really ready for town council to talk about any further, so let's refer it over to this committee. But it sounds instead like, for example, if this, once this committee exists, that some of the members of this committee might decide, we need more code enforcement, and then do what? I'm just a little confused about what the process would be like.
Steve?
So, great question. And so, I think part of it is the theory, part of the reason for this committee is the theory that anything that's proposed that requires town council action should go to a committee first. So, this would be the committee that would, if you think of a typical town meeting, what was heard at town meeting? Much of that had to do with some of the issues that are here, like zoning bylaw changes, the public art bylaw. I'm not gonna come up with the complete list. So, one way to look at this would be that this is simply the first, this is the town council's group that screens proposals that come from either other committees, or from, through citizen petition. Now, it's possible, once the group sort of gets its grounding, so, I, the answer, really the answer to your question is, I have no idea after that. But once the group gets its grounding, there's nothing, I mean, I could see it becoming more of also an activist, where it itself generates, like, wouldn't it be great if there was blank? You know, maybe something that doesn't, isn't appropriately coming out of one of the other many committees in Amherst. But I think that our primary, a primary goal of this is to support the committee structure that already exists in Amherst, and be the first, or be a liaison between those committees and the full council.
Well, one example of, of something that could come before this committee would be what the young man mentioned, the talk about making the firehouse, once it is vacated, into a public art structure. And I think it was at least two years ago, I was invited to a very large committee of people that I didn't know, or I heard about it and I went, that's probably more likely, that was on that issue. So, there's people in the town who've been working on this for a while. When we talk about economic development, we went to panels at the MMA, the Massachusetts Municipal Association, on vibrant downtowns. And one of the common threads that was in all of them was that there was restoration of historical buildings, and there was some public arts activity, and they pointed out that the public art might not make any money, but it made money for the things around it, the restaurants and whatever. And that's a kind of a fun way of doing economic development. So, that was one item. Another item that would be at least looked at and considered by this committee is the one that we are working on, and it's gonna come back to us, and that's the town green. There's, in other words, there's professional people who put, who do a tremendous amount of work in this town, who are doing things, but at some point, we wanted to say, let's look at the whole picture, and try to put it together.
I was in favor of this committee when it was first proposed. It had a much smaller definition, and I'm feeling like this is kind of burgeoning everywhere, without necessarily needing to. I don't think I wanna see this committee review every other committee's actions or thoughts, but I am concerned about sustainable planning, land use, zoning, working on the master plan, economic, community, and economic development, because unless we develop our community, we're gonna lose out on the equity hooji muggie thing. But we're also going to lose economic, chances at economic development, because the more you support the community, this more you support small business, the more vitality financially it can come. And I'm feeling like this is getting scattered. It's a committee I wanna work on, but I'm feeling like we need to refine it, and know that, I'm rambling, and I apologize, but I remember in the initial conversations, someone made the comment that this would slow down other committees. And the comment was made, that might be a good thing, because of the idea that the two of you have, of looking at things holistically.
Shalani? I'm seeing the role of this committee also in terms of the master plan, and kind of setting the priorities, like, reviewing the master plan, and so that we're all on board with what are our priorities as a town. And I think, once that's established through that, the other strategic vision is established after that.
Darcy? Oh, Kathy, I'm sorry.
I guess I, I wanna respond to the, a sense that isn't too large, is not focused enough. If this is the only extra committee we've got, so it's one of our fourth, it's the only one that could actually be actively proposing policies. We're in a legislative arm of the government. So, a question to ask is, do we need two, rather than one? And I'm not gonna give the definition of the other, you know, if it's too broad. But I'm thinking of policies, and we had an early discussion on neighborhoods, rental properties, decline of maintenance. Would this be a place where we view the way inspections and fees for failure to comply? What do we do to raise our standards on rental properties, or affordable housing? Because it's got all of this in it. And in some other towns, they have two. You know, I'm not saying how I would divide them, one focused one way, and one focused another, because we don't have another committee to be thinking about our housing policies, to think about development and culture and economic life. So, I think that's why it is as broad as it is. We don't have another place to have this larger policy research task force.
I have sort of been thinking of this committee as the master plan committee, and, and when it first came up, I was, you know, one of the people that said, that felt like a barrier. If it is looking at issues that are coming up from below, from, from the committees, or the zoning bylaw, or whatever, but, you know, my preference would be to have it be the master plan committee, where we could refer things down to it, it could have a goal, general goal of trying to update our policies in general, in all these different areas, for the updated master plan. And that would be a huge job. And it would, you know, various issues would come up, policy issues that would come back up to us, so that we could decide them for the master plan. The piece I don't really like is that, to have this committee positioned to be making recommendations on, like, the zoning bylaw, because it feels, it feels like it's taking the power away from the council, to be a step in between that and us.
Steve?
So, I think that everyone's made a great point, but, you know, to Kathy's point, I struggle with every committee that we has, that we have that has an AND statement in it. Like, should, if we have an AND statement, shouldn't that be two different committees? But I was also looking at towns that had broken out economic development, and it's kind of planning and zoning. It may be, now, hold on to your seats, but it may be that some of our committees develop subcommittees. In other words, so that it might be that there's, these are committees of five councillors, and that actually, three people are really interested in planning and zoning, and three people are interested in, you know, economic development, or something like that. You know, to, to Darcy's point, which I think is also an excellent one, in a way, you could call this the master plan committee, because pretty much everything that is listed is a master plan issue. So, it could either be, it could be the master plan implementation committee, so we evaluate things regarding the master plan, you know, is this consistent with the master plan, make a recommendation based on that. It could be the master plan update committee. So, I think that that's a very consistent idea with how this is perceived. And then, to Pat's point about shortening it, I would love to see your edited version of that, because it does look like the, you know, the whole store, and it would be nice to, I mean, I think that there are ways of tightening it up, so it doesn't become too diffuse.
Andy?
I guess the one thing about discussion of master plan is, is that we really need, as a council, to understand, and I'm not the one who can do this, the relationship with the planning board, because planning board is statutorily required to be the ones who develop a master plan. And in, when you read the charter, the role of this body is actually unusual, is strongly stated for many charters, but it doesn't place us in the position of developing a master plan. It is a question of reviewing and seeing whether we endorse or support. I forgot what the exact words are right now. So, I just wanted to, to put that out. But I think that there've been a lot of good points raised today. I don't think we're gonna solve it, as we didn't last week, solve a committee problem, and somehow ask the president to consider whether there's some way we can get this back to a group that can do some further work before it comes back to the council at the next meeting or thereafter.
Comments? I, I'm thinking an ad hoc committee, and rather than send it to governance organization and legislation, and get into that round that we did before, I'd rather have an ad hoc committee that meets to really hone in on this charge, before we look at structure and stuff like that. Alyssa?
I can certainly support that, but one of the things that, you know, without us actually having a template, and we've discussed some variations on that, and governance organization legislation is obviously looking at that more deeply. But one of the things we've been trying to incorporate thus far, things like action steps, reports, town council actions, and none of that is addressed yet in this format. And so, if I had a better understanding of what folks were And so if I had a better understanding of what folks were actually going to do on this committee, in terms of who they were going to be talking to before they talked to the council, and how often that was going to happen, and under what focus, I would feel a lot more comfortable with it. I understand it does not wish to just be, although one variation is a master plan implementation committee, it does not wish at this point to be simply reactive to things that are happening. Yet, I can't grasp a situation where a bunch of people are excited about talking about turning the fire station into an art center, and that's a focus of a committee, that's a town council standing committee, when we have literally 100 other things that we have to do before we have that discussion. We can't be spending our time on that discussion to the exclusion of other conversations, even though it's tied into economic development and other issues. So I'm just a little worried about the reality on the ground of what this will do, and maybe if it's beefed up a little, associated with what the reporting would be like, what the info gathering would be like, what the expectations were like, how often it was going to report back to this committee on things that didn't get referred to it by the committee, but that grew out of its own heads. That would be helpful.
Okay. Evan?
So one thing that I want to, I'm thinking about is making sure that this committee isn't duplicating the efforts of any other committee. So Mandy Jo brought up the idea that, what does it mean to advise the town council with regard to design review when we have a design review board? What does it mean to advise the town council on historic preservation when we have a historic commission? Looking at the last paragraph about relationship between town and educational institutions, what does that look like in the context of, say, UTAC, right? Or maybe a revived UTAC? And so hearing some concerns that maybe this is too broad, what's this going to do? And I think maybe a starting point for that is to think about constraining this where we don't want it to duplicate. Because I understand and desire to analyze research and review recommendations for the zoning bylaw, but we also want to make sure that when the planning board puts forth proposals, we're not doing the work over again before it goes to the council.
Pat?
Initially, we were talking about this as being an advisory committee, not a committee that would take away power from the council, but would add to the information that the council had to make decisions. So that feels like an important point to me. And what would we be advising on, and how far would we go in our research, are I think are important questions.
Shall I?
I'd like to, I was just curious also, what is the outcome we want to see? You know, let's say if we do everything this committee wants to do, like in the ECAC committee, our goal is, you know, reducing carbon emissions, green gas, oh, whatever, the green gas, greenhouse gases, yes. And so what is that goal that we are moving towards in this committee?
Thank you. I'm going to suggest we form an ad hoc committee, that that committee, so let me just move that, that we, the council form an ad hoc committee to review and refine this charge, answering some of the questions, many of the questions that have been raised tonight. It's a motion? Do I have a second? George was over there first. Yes.
Can you repeat, who made the motion?
That we form an ad hoc committee to look at the charge of the Community and Economic Development Committee and refine it in a manner that answers many of the questions raised. Okay. So we have a motion and a second? Any further discussion on that? Yes.
Just from a process perspective, is there, I'm trying to think, so the ad hoc committee would work on this and bring it forward to the council, but it still has to go through GOL. And so would we bring it to the council, have a full discussion, and then again, and then refer to GOL? Or is there a way to maybe do these that, once the ad hoc committee is done, it just automatically goes to GOL?
I think that that would be a wise plan, to have it go to GOL, or have GOL give you the format and the issues they want addressed. Yes, Dorothy?
One of the things that the ad hoc committee could do is to research similar committees from other towns. Because that's one of the things we found out from the MMA, that most towns have such a committee, and it's a very important committee. And I think we would say, what do you do? Okay? And how do you do it? And how do you do it so you don't duplicate?
Other comments, questions? Dorsey?
I would just say, from my experience with the ECAC, that we may want to assume there's going to be a few more drafts. And so we might not want to send it to the GOL committee right away, because we might want to wait till we get to the last draft. But it's up to the committee, it might have to go back. I mean, it might have to go back again.
I'm hoping that the committee itself can come up with draft, and maybe second draft, and whatever, and so that, and then if we could ask the governance organization and legislation committee to say, this is the format we want for committee, you know, charges, that it can be put in that form. There are going to have to be issues that you will need to discuss, including the makeup of the committee, the terms of the committee, and so forth. We've been through this more than once now. We've been through it once. And so there's some learning curve that I think we've benefited from all of that. Any other comment? Call the question? We, oops, yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Do we know who the committee is?
We haven't, no.
So we're going to approve the committee?
We're going to create the committee and then I appoint.
So this is how a committee appoints, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
It is. Mandy Jo, are you there?
Yes, I am, and my vote is a yes.
Okay, this is a roll call vote, and I'm going to ask the town clerk to call the roll.
Counselor Baumill?
Yes.
Counselor Brewer?
Yes.
Counselor DeAngelis?
Yes.
Counselor Dumont?
Yes.
Counselor Greizmer?
Yes.
Counselor Hanke?
Yes.
Counselor Pam?
Yes.
Counselor Ross?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
Counselor Shane?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Steinberg?
Yes.
And Counselor Schwartz?
Yes.
The vote is unanimous.
Okay. And now I would like to see a show of hands or a voice, if, because I can't see a show of hands, of those counselors who are interested, I will appoint five of you, because that's kind of our standard ad hoc committee at this point. So may I see a show of hands of people interested in being on this committee? Mandy Jo, are you putting your hand up or not?
I am not putting my hand up.
Okay, all right. No. Why? Okay, first of all, Dorothy and Steve, definitely. You don't, well, then I think, Pat?
Yeah. Well, I thought there were too many people.
There are. And it's a hard choice, although I know what Kathy's going to be facing with budgets, so I'm actually thinking about this. And this does not mean you can't give suggestions. Yes, Shalli?
Since this is an ad hoc advisory committee, could we have an even number? Because, you know, we're making a suggestion to the council and it's...
Could you have an even number?
Because it's an...
Mandy Jo, can they have an even number?
Sure.
I don't know.
I'm going to say yes. All right. So Shalli, Pat, George, and Kathy, as well as our two original authors. I'm even taking myself out of that, because forget the fact that I wrote the original one. No. And, no, I'm not on it. No, then that's a whole meeting. Okay, let me just repeat. The people who are on this ad hoc committee are Dorothy Pam, Steve Schreiber, Shalli Baumill, Pat DeAngelis, George Ryan, and Kathy Shane. Okay? Thank you. We're moving on to the next agenda item. And we actually took action on that one. The next agenda item is, in fact, the Energy, Climate, and Action Committee. There is a proposal before us of the actual charge, and I'd like to have us move directly to that charge of that committee and have it placed in motion. So I'm placing it in motion. I'd like somebody to place the charge in motion.
When are we hearing the report?
It's, I think the report is, in fact, the charge in this case.
Pardon?
The report is the fact, is the charge in this case.
Am I giving a report?
No, we're not going to vote the committee out of existence. Into existence. We already did that. I'm sorry? Evan, yes?
I moved to approve the charge of the Energy and Climate Action Committee.
Okay. Is there a second? George, thank you. Are there other, are there comments regarding the charge? Discussion?
I'm confused. I have on my agenda here, report from the ad hoc committee, and then the council motion and vote.
The, Dorsey, the report needs to go back to the committee to be edited, and before it comes to the full council. It needs, the report always needs to go back to a full, the committee that it came from, to have comments and edits before it can come into the council. And this, at this point, that has not happened. So we're going to not do the report, but stick to the motion of the charge. So we're focusing on the charge. Kathy?
I just have a question on what I'm looking at.
Okay.
So I'm looking at what I think is a revised charge that has color codes in it. And am I reading it as, this is the revised charge, rather than these are areas we have questions, or these are already, these are already areas that people have worked out? And we're, are we getting, and then my second question, are we getting a consensus document, or was there still some disagreement on what we're looking at? And I don't know the answers to that.
Okay, let me ask, let me stick to the first question. Is this, is this charge before us, with the turquoise and all of the yellow, the charge as it stands coming out of the committee?
Yeah, so let me just provide a 30-second explanation. The charge in front of you has two colors. The blue is what we voted on as a full council at the January 28th meeting. The yellow are revisions to the charge that were voted on and accepted by the ad hoc committee. So this is the final charge. The yellow is not intended to be areas of discussion, those are changes from the last version that you saw, but they reflect the votes of the ad hoc committee that was tasked with revising this.
Dorsey?
So the, the committee met on two different days and basically came to consensus on seven of the issues. And then we voted on three, which you saw in that draft report that hasn't been approved, I guess. So the three issues were whether or not the, the three issues that were voted on were whether or not the town councilor's term was one or two years, and that ended up being Steve vote moved for the term to be three years, and we voted unanimously that that should be the case. The second area in which we didn't have consensus was that Mandy Jo moved to amend Section 2B to require that emissions reductions goal dates recommended the town council, other than those required under the 100% renewable energy goals, be only those adopted, in quotation marks, adopted by the town council. So that was to require that any new goal dates be for items that had already been decided to be goals by the town council. And the third area was a motion by Mandy Jo to amend Section 4 to remove the list of possible programs and policies. And that was, initially, we discussed changing it to Concord's list of programs and policies, and then we discussed adopting the list that Steve had suggested earlier, and ultimately voted for 212 to adopt that. So basically, that's where it stood, the three motions were voted in the way that I just said. So despite the fact that the charge has been wordsmithed to death in, like, four hours of the governance committee, and at least four hours in the town council, and at least about four hours in the ad hoc committee, and more than an hour in the temporary rules committee, and it had at least 20 final drafts. We met with the town manager a couple of times, with the president several times. And even with all of that, I still think that the charge that we came up with is a very strong charge capable of positioning Amherst as a leader in climate action. It has a very strong, clear purpose and requirement for long-term and interim goals for both greenhouse gas reduction and climate action in general. I hope very much that in not that long a time, because of the outreach and education that we have done, residents from all sectors will have buy-in for the work of this committee.
Are there any other comments, George?
I think in honor of our 260th birthday, is that correct?
Yes.
As the town of the book and the plow, it's time to get this horse out of the barn and into the fields. So let's please pass this and let these folks get to work.
Andy?
So just going through, my comments or, and questions are fairly specific, but one thing that I don't understand is the term of appointment for three years. I just don't see how that works with a council that is elected for two years. And I also think that it's important that as a new council is elected every two years, that that council have the ability to appoint its own committees and not be left with committees that were appointed by a prior council. So that's one... So that's one subject that I was very concerned about. There are some typographical things in here that I will skip commenting on, but will point out for editorial purposes if asked or later. Another question that I have is on page two in the list under subsection four. I would like to know what built environment means, because it's not a term that I'm particularly familiar with. And I think the last thing is, is that the SME status is actually, this gets to editorial things again, but SME status is mentioned at the beginning and at the end, and with the blank there. So I therefore am not sure that it's necessary in both.
Okay. Yes, Steve?
So I feel like the guy that hit the jeopardy category is that he's been studying for. But so the, the answer to the three-year question is, that just seemed like the best possible way to describe the terms. So this is not a committee of the council, it's a committee of the town. So the, what we're saying is that two members of this town committee must be councillors, the other seven must be residents, some of which may have these expertises. So why not treat the councillors and the seven other residents the same? So everyone gets a three-year term. The staggered terms to begin with will be one, one-third will get a one-year, one-third will get two years, one-third will get three years. People move in-town, they move out-of-town, they get bored with committees, so people go on and off committees all the time. So if a councillor doesn't win election or wants to go off the council, they resign, their term, their, their term, somebody else takes their place. I mean, this is a very common practice on all of our boards and committees. And also, quite frankly, it's the only possible, every other variation didn't work, like, because we need one at staggered terms, then the two-years didn't work. I mean, it just, nothing else worked. So this is the only, in my estimation, this is the only possibility that worked. Also, it's, so it means that the, the two councillors that go on, one will likely get a two-year term, the other one will likely get a three-year term. So there'll be some continuity, or possibly they'll both get three-year terms. It's up to the town manager. So the built environment is a term of art that basically means anything that is human-constructed. So it could be buildings, it could be roads, it could be parks that are designed, it could be a golf course, so anything that's human-constructed by humans, as opposed to, well, it's opposite, it's the natural environment, but then there's a whole area in between. Maybe I shouldn't have said that last part.
I can possibly explain the SME status, which is part of our whole charge issue and the fact that we don't have a standard template for it, but the reason it's mentioned at the beginning is because whether or not it should be available, the reason it's mentioned at the end is to show that whether or not we voted on it. So it shouldn't be there three times, it should be there two times. Hopefully, it's there two times. But this will be clear when we have little lines and things like that on our charges. I still am concerned about the terms, and I realize and appreciate that a different group worked on this and that I just keep harping on this every time we talk about it here, but I don't agree with having the town council terms be longer than one year. I, it totally works to give town councillors only one-year terms. There's no conflict with the fact that they're one, two, and three-year terms for the initial non-council residence, and it just feels more appropriate to me, given that almost all, if not all, certainly all that I have anything to say about, terms will be one-year when they're appointed by the president. I realize this is not a presidential appointment, it is a town council appointment, but I don't understand going beyond, or, or it's a town manager appointment. That needs to be super clear. But at any rate, it's all the town manager, but to have it be longer than one year, just for a town councillor, just doesn't make sense to me, given that I feel that as we all have developed all our committee commitments, that every year we should be looking and saying, okay, well, now it's time for the president to survey us again to find out who wants to be on JCPC and who wants to do this. Oh, a councillor's serving on this. Because if you're not serving as a councillor, then you, you should be serving as a resident. Well, you can't be both. So you're a councillor first, and to me, a councillor gets a one-year term on a committee.
I, I have a question about the use of the type of committee being standing. It seems to me that this is not a standing committee. It is a regular committee, or what is the term we should use? Yes?
Maybe Mandy Jo actually is a better answer to this, but this is still a term of art that needs to be worked out by governance legislation. When you see a later charge this evening, depending on what hour that is, you will see some, we've now retitled a particular committee, a standing committee of the town council. Standing is a term that's been used as opposed to time-limited or ad hoc. Now that we have standing committees of the council, that's a whole new concept that never existed under the former form of government. So people were just using standing to mean it doesn't end after a certain period of time, so we need a new term of art for that. Governance, G-O-L, probably has one.
So this is not a standing committee of the council? Okay. Evan?
So govern, oh, actually, Mandy Jo wants to say something, so she's probably going to say what I was going to say.
Mandy Jo?
Yeah, so I, I am going to address it as chair of governance. The governance committee had gotten as far as sort of type and legal reference and decided that the type would refer to, as Alyssa was saying, whether it's a standing or ad hoc for any committee, not necessarily just town committees of the council, that standing would refer to a committee that's intended to exist for a long time. Ad hoc is something that is time-limited. And that the legal reference line would be the line that indicates whether it's a committee of the council or a committee of the town. We hadn't quite gotten to discussing whether we wanted to put that also specifically, those words, committee of the council, committee of the town, into the type, as Alyssa was saying, one charge coming through tonight will say standing committee of the town council, I think. But, but the standing ad hoc was to reference a timing of it, not whether it was council or town.
And is the section 2.5 the one that allows us to just create committees that are not standing? Not standing committees of the council, excuse me?
Yes.
Okay. So I've clarified that question. I do have one other question, and that is, when councillors serve on these committees, are they speaking for the council?
If, if that's coming to me, the governance committee wouldn't have discussed that yet.
Can I ask?
Kathy?
I'll ask the same question with JCPC. When we're on JCPC, are we speaking for the council?
Fair.
You know, in other words, I mean, we have some other places that we get slotted in, so...
Alyssa?
That's absolutely the intention with things like JCPC and BCG. Those bodies don't work correctly and have not worked correctly in the past, when people have considered themselves representative in a general sense like jury duty, as opposed to taking information back and forth to what was often referred to as their home committee. The only reason you're there is not because you've been a town councillor, it's because you're talking back and forth to the town council. So that's true for JCPC and BCG. Is that true? Is an excellent question for this.
There is a difference. Those others are all elected bodies coming as representatives. Yes. So my question still stands. Steve?
Well, this committee will, this committee will have a chair, so the chair, but that's not your question. So my opinion is that the two people are, that are serving as councillors would be no different than a person who's on the, on it because they have expertise in net-zero energy buildings. So the person on net who has expertise in net-zero energy buildings wouldn't be speaking for all net-zero energy buildings, they'd be speaking from their own expertise. And so the two councillors would be speaking from their particular perspective of maybe knowing what the poll, having an aerial perspective of what's happening in the town, but I think only the president speaks for the council.
Well, the council, only the council speaks for the council, and if, unless the council has voted a position that this, that the councillors on this committee would take forward, can the councillor, can the councillors on this committee in fact then speak for the council? And the reality is, they can't. So they can be of the council, but they cannot speak for the council unless the council has made a decision on something. They can be a liaison back and forth to the council, but... Alyssa?
I am belaboring this because this is why I didn't want councillors on this committee to begin with, or I wanted it to be a standing committee of the council. I think it's a mistake to have committees that have town councillors whose role is not to be a conduit back and forth to the town council.
Okay. We have several discussions on the floor. We have a name of a committee, and I think that's, at this point, fine. We, we all agree that it is a standing committee meeting, but not standing of the council. It is a standing committee of the town. It's an ongoing committee of the town. Two, two major questions that have been raised. One is the three-year terms, and then the second really is not in the charge itself, but it's basically inherent in the charge, and that is the councillors being on the committee. So I think we should deal with the three-year terms. Is there a motion to amend this regarding the three-year terms? Yes, Shalene?
For, I mean, do the motion and then the discussion, because I just wanted to respond, what was the reasoning, one of the reasons why we chose the three-year term?
Please, yes.
We've, I guess, we felt that, that a councillor would need two years at least to work on this. Some of this work, you know, if they're starting out, and some of the work is going to take more than a year, and it would be, it's not fair for a councillor to have that uncertainty that after a year they may not be appointed. So anyway, that was my reasoning, that having at least a two-year commitment, that they can really do their best in two years at least to get the things rolling.
Okay. I mean, if there's not a motion to change it, it just means that when, if a councillor is no longer a councillor and they're still in their three-year term, they cannot complete that term. And we are already, even though we sit for three years and one month, actually in 27 days, 28 days, future councils will only sit for two years. So it's... They, this can come back for changing at any point in time. Is there anybody that feels strongly enough on the three-year issue that they need to make a motion at this point? Okay? Then I don't see, on the other issue of councillors being on it, is there anybody that wants to bring that to a motion at this point? Okay? Are there any other questions to be raised or in an amendment process at this point? Andy?
Yeah, it's not an amendment process, so I don't want to put it out there in that fashion. I do think we should consider this whole thing about calling any committee we create a standing committee, simply because if you look through the entire list of committees that has been handed off to us and that has existed for eons in the town, there's never been the concept of a standing committee. You create a committee because you're creating a committee and you feel a need for the committee. If it's a term-limited committee, that's an exception, and it's very specifically stated. The one that is most recent that I can recall was Downtown Parking Working Group, which was specifically given a responsibility that was for a limited time and less extended. So, you know, by, it's, it's just a matter of consistency with all of the committee charges that we inherited, unless we're going to go back and change every one of them, to use the word standing. They're all assuming the word standing just because of their existence unless otherwise stated.
Right. So we're not, at this point, going to actually change how this is written. However, we may at some point come back and do a whole review of what we, how we refer to different committees. Something I think the charter has started, but not finished. Okay? Any other questions, amendments? Margaret?
I would just ask that in the original motion, the words "as presented" be added to the original motion, so we're clear for the record that it's the charge that was brought forth tonight.
Okay. That is a friendly amendment? Yes? And the second person? Seconded? Okay. Are there any other questions? Thank you. Because if you didn't, I would, I call the question. All those in favor, this will be a row call vote.
Councillor Brewer?
No.
Councillor DeAngelis?
Yes.
Councillor Dumont?
Yes.
Councillor Griesmer?
Yes.
Councillor Hankey?
Yes.
Councillor Pam?
Yes.
Councillor Ross?
Yes.
Councillor Ryan?
Yes.
Councillor Shane?
Yes.
Councillor Schreiber?
Yes.
Councillor Steinberg?
Yes.
Councillor Swartz?
Yes.
Councillor Baumilm?
Yes.
The vote is 12 to 1.
Thank you. We were going to have public comment, but I didn't take it. I don't think we need it. Is that okay? Thank you. We've had public comment, and it lasted for a few seconds of applause. All right, we are moving on to the Communications Outreach and Appointments Committee. No, actually, the ad hoc committee has to go through one more round of exercise, and that is to approve their minutes and to approve their committee report. Okay? And until such time they do, we are not going to dissolve the committee. They can do that by sending things to one person and not debate online. Okay? The Communications Outreach and Appointments Committee, is the report of the committee. Sarah?
Do you want the report now before we do the motion? Because I just noticed that it's also number eight, that, so I don't know. Mine's very brief, so...
Why don't you just report on this motion at this point?
Okay. So the, the motion before you would be to amend the charge of the Communications Outreach and Appointments Committee. The comment that I would make on, on that is the, simply the changes that have been made. One, we did change our name, because if we didn't, then we would have, our acronym would be the same as the Council on Aging. So we did change our name to the Outreach Communications and Appointments Committee. And the, the only changes to our charge were, you have a, the original, and then you have a markup copy that simply was, there was no change in the context, it's just to meet the requirements of making sure that our charge is the same as the other charges that have been put forward.
Okay. So the motion's been made, is there a second? George, seconded? This, that's to accept the charge. I'm going to have Sarah being the person that did the motion. George is the second. Any further discussion? Call the question, all those in favor? Uh, we have to do a row call vote?
Councillor DeAngelis?
Yes.
Councillor Dumont?
Yes.
Councillor Griesmer?
Yes.
Councillor Hankey?
Yes.
Councillor Pam?
Yes.
Councillor Ross?
Yes.
Councillor Ryan?
Yes.
Councillor Shane?
Yes.
Councillor Schreiber?
Yes.
Councillor Steinberg?
Yes.
Councillor Swartz?
Yes.
Councillor Baumilm?
Yes.
Councillor Brewer?
Yes.
The vote is unanimous.
Okay. The next item on our budget, on our budget, next item on our agenda, is the Zoning Board of Appeals. And I categorize this as a kind of cleaning up our act, if you will. And it comes, and I've shared with each of you, the email that has been sent out, although we have made a change in the reference to the charter in that email. we have made a change in the reference to the charter in that email, and is in your packet. Basically, this is to extend the appointments of four members, of four people who are acting as members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, and have been doing that since December 3rd. And their appointments were initially extended by the Select Board back in May, and this now extends it to June 30th, 2019. And particularly because that would give us time to go through the process of appointing a zoning board of appeals. Is there, so I'm placing in motion to appoint the following members of the Zoning Board of Appeals to comply with Amherst Home Rule Section 10.70, all the term, all with terms to expire June 30th, 2019. Keith Langsdale, Joan O'Meara, Thomas Simpson, and Steve Judge. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion or questions? Call a question?
This is a roll call vote. Counselor Dumont?
Yes.
Counselor Griesmer?
Yes.
Counselor Hanke?
Yes.
Counselor Pam?
Yes.
Counselor Ross?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
Counselor Shane?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Steinberg?
Yes.
Counselor Schwartz?
Yes.
Counselor Baumill?
Yes.
Counselor Brewer?
Yes.
Counselor DeAngelis?
Yes.
The vote is unanimous.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is appointments, and the only item under that is a town manager appointment. Mr. Bachman, would you like to speak to the appointments?
Yes, thank you. So in, in your packet, and filed with the town clerk today simultaneously, I refer to you appointments for the Community Action, Community Preservation Commission. The appointments you have in front of you are the recommendations that have been received from the various committees that are required by our bylaw. These are, the committees said these are the people we'd like to have represented, and those are the ones that are in front, in, in front of you. I can, I could read their names to you if you'd like. David Williams from the Amherst Housing Authority, Fletcher Clark from the Conservation Commission, Robin Fordham from the Historical Commission, Sarah Marshall from the LSSC Commission, and Michael Burtwhistle from the Planning Board.
So in other words, these are committees that were asked who they would like to appoint?
Yes, and each committee took action to recommend these.
And each committee took action to recommend, so in fact, these are not town manager appointments?
Technically are.
Technically they are, okay.
And that's why it's, but we honor the request from the committee, and it goes to you for your review as well.
Okay. So there are two options here. One is to make these appointments, and the second is to refer this to the Communications Out...
No name.
Outreach Communications and Appointments Committee. Yes, Alyssa?
So I have two questions. One is, I did not get a chance, because we just got this today, to go back and go through our minutes of previous referrals, but it had been my belief that because this committee of Outreach Communications and Appointments was established, that this no longer needed a referral every time it came to the council, that things were just going straight to us. And while they could certainly get additional attention by being reported out at this commit, at this council meeting, it might be that the town manager wanted to make appointments some week we're not having a meeting and would not need to hold on to that. And so I'm unaware of why there would need to be a motion to refer it to OK, unless the idea was we would go ahead and simply agree to it because of the unique nature of these particular appointments, which is to, that they are sent by what I referred to earlier tonight as home committees. Which then leads me to one more comment associated with that, which I utterly object to, as I have stated to every committee whoever brought forward CPAC appointments in the past, that unless they can point to why this is true in this Community Preservation Act law that we accepted as a community many years ago, it does not make any sense to me at all that the person's term would be co-terminous with their term on the sending body. So for example, Amherst Housing Authority appointments used to be five years long. And so to say that for five years that person's going to serve on the Community Preservation Act makes no sense to me. That seems like the sort of thing a committee should be looking at every year, and, and sending that forward again, because you need to rebalance who's doing what on any individual committee. So as it turns out, most of these dates are either 19 or 20, which would be a one-year appointment, but there is one on there that is much longer, and it just simply doesn't make, again, unless it's a technicality in the Community Preservation Act law, which is rather burdensome in the way it's rather detailed. We didn't just pick these committees out of the air, they come out of the law. But I don't believe we need to have it be co-terminous with that end, and we've had problems in the past with bodies who have appointed a person to serve that, they've been appointed to serve for their three-year term on the body, then they've stopped showing up, then it's become awkward for the committee to throw that person off, and then they're not showing up at the Community Preservation Act meetings. And so if you just do it on a year-by-year basis, then it's simplified. So that would be my recommendation to the housing authority in this particular case, that they understand that it would be for a year, that it's not up to them to say when it ends. But that's been a previous discussion.
Comments? So the option is to accept these or to refer. I have to say that, given the fact that the individual bodies have already made their nominations, I found it less compelling to refer, but that's, if the, I have to get the name straight, Outreach Communications and Appointments Committee wants to have it be automatic referral, then we can make it automatic referral. Shalini?
I think it would be helpful for me to have a sense of what is the charge of the OCA committee, so, I mean, what is their role and with respect to appointments?
Yes, Andy, please.
Yeah, I think that maybe I should respond to that and put that into the context of why we probably ought to go ahead and act on this tonight. The Community Preservation Act Committee exists as a matter of state law, that if we've accepted the Community Preservation Act as a community, which we have, that there has to be a committee, such as the one that we're talking about, that review, that obtains proposals and then reviews proposals and makes recommendations for funding to the legislative body of the community, in this case, council. And then when the council receives the proposal, we have options available to us to accept, reduce the amount, but we do not have the ability to create our own proposals that have not previously gone to the Community Preservation Act Committee. Having been the liaison for several years from the Select Board to this committee, which was a non-voting member, I just observed the meetings. They worked really hard, and there's a lot of thought that goes into the process, a lot of time that goes into the process, of reviewing the applications and asking questions of the proposers who've submitted proposals, and thinking very hard about how they can propose the best allocation of what is always less money available than money requested. And the CPAC this year has already begun some of that work, and I think that we would be not serving the purpose of the committee well if we don't go ahead and confirm the appointment, so that the people who have been actually meeting with the committee but are not voting members can actually complete the work that they have already engaged in. So it's a long answer to the question, but it gets to the point that I support our making the decision tonight to confirm these appointments as recommended by the manager.
So is that a motion?
I will make that a motion.
Okay. Second, further discussion. Pat, did you have a question?
I just had a comment. It seems to me that, as Alyssa said, that these, it's very, and Andy also, this is a very special kind of appointment, that we can pass it through, but it's also critically important to me that we refer any town manager recommendations to the Outreach and Appointments Committee, and that they have information about the pool of applicants for these committees.
Of which there wouldn't have been a pool in this case, because they were, right, yeah. Yes, Sarah, please.
I don't want this to be redundant to what Pat said, but yeah, just to, to answer to Shalini, the reason why that we, the reason that we exist is to make sure that we have a decision tree, a process for all appointments, and that we have a process that's transparent and easily understood and can be followed each time. So while I, I do understand that we're saying, what we're saying about this committee, I think that appointments should, should go through us.
When, let me just clarify. Even in the case where they're identified by bodies other than us and other than the town manager, per se?
I think in this particular, that's what I'm saying, I guess I wasn't clear. I'm acknowledging that in this case, that they were, I think that, that is okay in this particular case, is what I was trying to say, although I do want to give credence to, when we look at, at terms, I, I think that, that's something that's important.
Right. At some other point, I would suggest that the Outreach Communications and Appointments Committee actually look at how we've set up these terms, but not necessarily at this point, yeah. Andy?
Yeah, I, I agree with Sarah's reasoning on this. I think that there should be a practice that, under normal circumstances, that all committee appointments do go through the committee of, of the council that's appropriate. We're sort of in an unusual circumstance in our first year of operation as a council, that we're inheriting a government that's working and is also in transition, and this is just a special circumstance, but I don't think the special circumstance should swallow what's the sound practice for council going forward.
And in fact, there, we have agreed as a council, I believe, that all committee appointments would go first to that committee and then come to us. So there is a motion on the floor, it's been seconded, that in this case, we actually go ahead, yes. Darcy, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to say that we had a meeting this morning, and we, we looked up the definition of "one-off" to try to see if we could find a better word, which we couldn't, but, so this is just another situation, another one-off from my perspective, and that we would hope to get future referrals to the committee.
Any further conversation? Call the question.
This is a roll call vote on the motion to approve the town manager's recommended appointments to the Community Preservation Act Committee. Counselor Griesmer?
Yes.
Counselor Hanke?
Yes.
Counselor Pam?
Yes.
Counselor Ross?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
Counselor Shane?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Steinberg?
Yes.
Counselor Schwartz?
Yes.
Counselor Baumill?
Yes.
Counselor Brewer?
Yes.
Counselor DeAngelis?
Yes.
Counselor Dumont?
Yes.
The vote is unanimous.
Thank you. We're now going to move on to committee reports. These reports can be as brief as you'd like to make them. Communications Outreach and Appointments.
So mine is going to be brief. I believe that everyone received our report to read, so you can read it. If you had, you know, any questions, feel free, but I, I think the only things that are worth note that we have done since the last time there's been a report is that we changed our name. We cleaned up our charge, and that today, as our, today is our morning meeting at 9:30, we moved to appoint the following members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, ZBA, to comply with Amherst Home Rule Charter Section 10.70, with, all with terms to expire on June 30th, 2019. Keith Langsdale, Joan O'Meara, Thomas Simpson, and Steve Judge.
And then we acted on that. Great.
And I, and I guess I should also assure everyone that what we have been working very, very diligently on and trying to be thoughtful as well as expedient is decision trees, so that we can bring you a process for all of the appointments to the, to the council. How do we handle it? We have, we have, we have different decision trees, and we're working really hard to do that for you.
Great, thank you. Finance Committee.
So the Finance Committee did not have a written report, because we actually have not met since we completed our work on the recommendation for the Station Road Bridge, which was a written report that you previously received. We are meeting tomorrow and have a tentative meeting for a week from tomorrow. I should say we're meeting tomorrow if the weather permits us to meet, and I'm assuming that it will. The purposes of the meeting tomorrow are largely to work on the capital projects that we discussed earlier, to see if we can understand a little bit more about the financial elements of the proposals that are out there, or likely to be out there, material that was presented to you, but I think that the committee, our Finance Committee needs to understand better. A second thing is that we're going to begin to have discussions about how to develop a long-term plan that would encompass funding of all of the major projects that we're discussing, horizontal and vertical, as they have been previously described to us. And then the third element is to organize ourselves on how we plan to do our work for the remainder of the year and handle the various issues that are going to be coming before us, mostly the budget, both the operating budget, the capital budget, and really it's the consolidated operating budget for the entire community, because it also includes the enterprise funds. And we're going to have to determine how we're going to approach that work and the number of meetings and schedule of meetings that we have going forward. So at the next meeting, I think we will likely have a more substantial and written report for you. The other thing that I wanted to just briefly say is that Kathy, who's the vice chair of the committee, and I went last week to meet with Dave Murphy, who is Chair of the Committee on Finance of the North Hampton City Council, because we thought that it would be helpful for us to know how another community works in more than just looking at paper, but actually sitting down and having an intensive discussion and being able to ask questions. And Counselor Murphy was extremely generous with his time and allowed us to sort of hear his presentation of how they work. Their charter is very similar to ours, because they're a city, as we're a city now, and so they're working on same timetable. It also is a very similar process of how the budget moves from the executive, in their case, the mayor, in our case, the town manager, to the council and is considered in a Finance Committee. I'm not going to go through all of my, what he said, because that would be impossible to do, but I'm going to touch just real quick on four points and then see if Kathy has anything to add. One is that most of their meetings are embedded in council meetings, so when a meeting is scheduled... scheduled, it includes a note to that effect in the meeting notice to make sure that that is appropriate, and actually did look at their meeting notices afterwards. But the way it was described to us is that all of the councilors sit there and then when the, it adjourns as council meeting and convenes, is a Finance Committee meeting, that the Finance Committee Chair, Mr. Murphy, takes over and chairs the meeting. The only people who vote are the members of the Committee on Finance. In retrospect and thinking about that, I think it's difficult for us to consider such an option, mostly because our charter mandates that there be four members of the committee who, well, it doesn't say four, I think we've created four, but it, but we've, we've made that commitment now, and with non, but we are required to have non-council members of the committee, so I think that would make it a very difficult process. But his point was is that it is, financial issues are integral in everything that a council does and that it creates an understanding in a very efficient way. I think that as a Finance Committee, we're going to have to discuss that and find how we're going to make sure that we're providing that opportunity for you in some other way. The other things, just, and I'll try and be real quick on that. He, we asked about what matters go before the Finance Committee, and he said, well, any matter that has any financial impact on it, which can be lots of different things, but that he also pointed out that their practices in North Hampton, that matters can go before numerous committees, that it doesn't necessarily have to go before just a single committee so that if there's a financial impact, they may get it, but another committee may get it. He did say that if it's an ordinance, which is the equivalent to of what we're calling bylaws, that the Legislative Committee is the last one to comment, before it goes to the council, and he talked a little bit about the second reading process. And the last thing that I wanted to just comment on is, similar to our JCPC, they have a Committee on Capital Improvements that reviews the proposals from the various departments. It is a little bit different from our JCPC in that it is composed a little bit more solidly of staff and has, and so staff has a more dominant role in that committee than ours. But the other thing that I noted was that their committee actually was reviewing proposals in October and November and doing it well in advance of the process. It would, and then the proposals go, in their case, to the mayor for review, and it sort of emphasized to me a point that I had been thinking about, and again, we have to raise with the Finance Committee, is we really need to look very carefully at our schedule for the year, the annual schedule, of how it is that we do the budget process and how the committee, the Finance Committee fits into the entire budget process. And what we just did with the Community Preservation Act Committee is another example because they have historically worked to try and get a report out by town meeting date at the beginning, that was essentially, I gave them an April deadline. They don't need an April deadline for what we do. Most cities that have Community Preservation Act have multiple times during the year where they will consider proposals, and it's a more of a rolling basis. He said that they have two principal rounds in North Hampton. So there's a lot of scheduling questions that I still think that we have to come to grips with as a council in order to figure out how to make this entire budget process, finance process, work most efficiently and effectively.
Thank you. Kathy, did you have anything to add?
No, that was very thorough.
Thank you. Governance, Organization, and Legislation Committee?
There is no report because the GOL Committee has not met since our last meeting and our last report. We have two meetings scheduled this week, both Thursday and Friday, to get to the rest of our work. The first thing on that agenda is the template for committee charges, and then we'll be reviewing some of the stuff that I talked about at our retreat, language for clarity, consistency, and actionability, and what we actually mean by that, and some, the charge itself, and then the resident advisory committee charge that has been referred to us at this point. So that is my report.
Thank you. Rules of Procedure and Hock Committee? Alyssa?
Yes, before I give the report, might I ask that, aside from the lateness of the hour, would, might we normally consider entertaining questions after each committee's report?
Oh, thank you. Are there any questions thus far?
Because Mr. Steinberg answered my question that I had, so it worked out perfectly.
Alyssa?
Our report is in your packet. It was submitted many days ahead of time. Thank you to Vice Chair Kathy Shane. She made sure that she basically documented what we decided at a meeting and turned it in immediately. So that worked, that was incredibly efficient, and you saw what we suggested tonight was put into practice, associated with the public comment periods, and I very much appreciate, and we appreciate, the President's willingness to say, yeah, let's try something new. So we will continue to offer trials like that on a variety of issues. We have many things that we are working on in terms of all the rules of procedure that are out there in the world that we are trying to turn into appropriate amherst-level procedures. But one thing that I think would be useful to consider in your minds, governance to consider, and luckily, Mandy Jo's also on Rules of Procedure with us, is one of the ways we might avoid some of this confusion around what standing committees are and just standing being, really, it being anything other than standing, is there's, it's very typical in other communities that what we're calling standing committees of the town council are called town council subcommittees other places. Maybe, mind blown. We could consider calling ourselves subcommittees, in which case, that would be a lot clearer to a lot of people as to what that committee is. It's a subcommittee that's only town councilors, because that's the way we've defined it. So something that we'll be talking about, again, I assume GOL may talk about and may come forward at some point in the process.
Kathy?
I just want to add one more thing. You have it, as Alyssa said, you have it in the report. We also talked about the public comments we get that aren't people coming to the meeting but are sending us, and trying to work with our community, community participation officers or to figure out a way if we can capture them in a form that we can make a repository that's public. And I, we met, I met someone who came to chat with me in office hours today that said in Montana, in his community, their council puts them up and it's called public comments, and there is a, by correspondence, someone's putting them up as a PDF and posting them, and the Charter Commission did this. So people will realize that they can send it to us by mail, they can send to us by email, and it will be out there, and it's, it'll require some work, but it's a way of making people feel we're really welcoming the comments, and the broader public will be able to see them. So this is, we have to figure out if it's feasible, how we would do it, but I think it would be a way of being very responsive and if people have families and can't get here at dinnertime, they can still feel their comment reach the wider world as well as us.
We look forward to a recommendation from the committee. Thank you. Are there other questions? Are there other questions of this committee? Okay. Proclamations and commemorations? There are none. We're moving to approval of minutes, and let me just state for the purpose of discussion that we do send the draft minutes out to people in advance. We ask that if they have comments, they provide them directly to the town clerk by noon on Monday so that they can be corrected and put in this agenda. And the two committee minutes sets that we are approving, are looking at today, and I'll take them, first, January 28th. Do I hear a motion to approve? Is there a second? So it was Pat and Kathy? We need a roll call vote? And, oh, questions, questions, I'm sorry, questions.
Yeah, actually, I do have a correction if I have the correct set of minutes on page three. In the first time, it says voted, 382, it has me voting twice, which in fact, I did not do. And because I, I did abstain, I did not vote for, and I also was curious whether Councilor Pam was present and voted, and so I was a little bit uncertain on the, on the vote for that meeting.
If I may, I, I don't have the actual video to look back at or the folder to look back at at the moment, but we will make the correction.
Pam, Dorothy?
I was here on the 28th of January.
Okay. All right, so the, it seems that the one correction is that, Steve?
Page seven, at the bottom.
January 28th?
Yeah.
Okay.
Page seven at the bottom, voted 11-0, but the count, I think, is 11-2?
Any other comments or observations? Do I hear, then I guess we're to call the question.
So it's as amended?
As amended, yes. Call the question to approve the minutes, says for January 28th, 2019, as amended. We need a roll call vote.
Councilor Hanke?
Yes.
Councilor Pam?
Yes.
Councilor Ross?
Yes.
Councilor Ryan?
Yes.
Councilor Shane?
Yes.
Councilor Schreiber?
Yes.
Councilor Steinberg?
Yes.
Councilor Schwartz?
Yes.
Councilor Baumill?
Yes.
Councilor Brewer?
Abstain.
Councilor DeAngelis?
Yes.
Councilor Dumont?
Abstain.
Councilor Griesmer?
Yes.
The vote is 11 in favor, two abstentions.
Okay, we're moving on to the minutes of the council retreat, which is February 2nd, 2019. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll move.
Steve to move, second. George to second. Okay, move the question. Oh, I'm sorry, Shalani?
It seems like there were a lot, lot more discussion that happened than is recorded, even in terms of bullet points, so...
We don't have a video of that minute, of that meeting, so it, unless you are, I mean, there will be other products coming out of that meeting, and one of them I'm going to speak to in a moment, and that's the goals. Is that sufficient? Okay. Any other questions, comments? Call the question? Roll call vote?
The motion is to approve the February 2nd, 2019 Town Council Minutes as presented. Councilor Pam?
Yes.
Councilor Ross?
Yes.
Councilor Ryan?
Yes.
Councilor Shane?
Yes.
Councilor Schreiber?
Yes.
Councilor Steinberg?
Yes.
Councilor Schwartz?
Abstain.
Councilor Baumill?
Yes.
Councilor Brewer?
Abstain.
Councilor DeAngelis?
Yes.
Councilor Dumont?
Yes.
Councilor Griesmer?
Yes.
Councilor Hanke?
Yes.
The vote is 11 in favor and two abstentions.
Okay. Town managers' report, are there some highlights from this?
First, I want to announce, if students don't know already, there is an early dismissal tomorrow, 11:30 for the regional schools and 12:30 for the elementary schools, in anticipation of the snows coming. And also, beginning tomorrow night, there will be a snow emergency declared, beginning tomorrow morning, and so all car, no cars will be allowed to be parked on the street starting tomorrow, tomorrow night, not tonight, which is Tuesday at 11:59 PM, that cars will have to be removed, so people, want to make sure people hear about that. Attended an excellent event today with the President at Wagner Wood. This is a, put on by the Department of Energy of the Commonwealth, with the Secretary and the Commissioner of Energy being there, it's the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs Secretary, and they announced a grant of $800,000,000 to Wagner Wood to purchase the equipment to process, handle, store, and deliver dry wood, including the purchase of a chip trailer designed to pneumatically deliver dried residential or commercial fuel storage silo, silos. And it was a tremendous event put on by the Wagner family. They had literally carved a podium out of a tree trunk.
It's beautiful.
And had decorated, and they had created seating out of trees that they had cut just for the event, and it was, and it was a really remarkable event. The, the fourth thing was the, I want to thank the university and the cooperation for the fire and police for the Super Bowl festivities. At the end, there was about 2,500 to 3,000 people who had gathered around the Southwest dorms. There was one injury, our, our fire chief got, well, there was, there's some incidents off campus with small fires and people being hurt, but pretty much our entire staff responded really well and really was focused on have, making sure people are in the right place. There's a lot of planning done in advance. Fortunately, we're getting used to this because we've had a lot of victories in our professional sports teams, and so they did a great job. On a slightly sad note, on Sunday afternoon, and this is more of a warning to the public, a 11-year-old boy was walking across the ice at Puffers Pond and the ice collapsed under him. He was just, I don't think he went in very deep, but there were ice fishermen there that probably gave, we think, gave him confidence he could walk on the ice, but not all of Puffers Pond is safe to walk on. Police and fire responded, took him over to CDH, and he was fine, as, almost as a precautionary measure. But an alert to the public that we, we have signs up there that the ice, especially where the channel comes in, moving water doesn't freeze very quickly, and that's, it can be very thin ice, even though you might see people fishing, ice fishing in other parts of the pond, and this is true, so please be careful of the ice. The compliments to the LSCE and their Winter Fest, they had a week long, week of activities. Luminary was spectacular, brought a lot of people downtown. Children loved it. This is where they put bags with candles in them throughout the common, and it was, it was very popular, and I talked to a number of people who came downtown just for that and then said, and then we went out to dinner. So it was a real boost for the business economy downtown, and they concluded on Saturday with an event at Cherry Hill, which was very well attended as well. The, this week, we will be doing a mock emergency drill, that the police, the fire chief is organizing with MIMA, and they, he will be putting town staff through their paces on a different scenarios that will be at a tabletop exercise, but say, now this is happening, now that is happening, what would you do? What would you do? Just to train us in terms of decision-making during a crisis. It's a good thing, and then we can, we will debrief afterwards to say what went right and what went wrong. Attended a meeting today as we prepare for the event that will not be named on March 2nd. There will be a concert at the university, there's also a hockey game at the university, and so the police and fire and the university are all working very cooperatively to, to make sure that that day goes off as smoothly as it has for the last three years. Interestingly, that's also the day of the four town meetings, which will be at the high school because the police take over the middle school for the most part, and so we will let the other towns know that they may see a large number of police officers on our streets, but that's precautionary, it's nothing to worry about. on our streets, but that's precautionary, it's nothing to worry about. The downtown parking consultant has started their work. They met with the Business Improvement District and other stakeholders, I mentioned that, and they'll be here again to continue to meet with the public. The Board of License Commissioners has its inaugural meeting tomorrow at the same time as the Finance Committee, and they will be basically hearing, being welcomed, making sure that they've done all the things they need to do to comply with being able to serve, being told, discussed, having, talk about what their mission is and what, and being given material. There isn't real action for them to take on that first meeting, which was our intention. We're blessed that Mr., Mr. Slaughter, former Select Board Chair, is serving on that committee. He has gone through a lot of the stuff before, so I think that will be a very strong committee. And then I mentioned the four towns meeting, and also, I think the President mentioned that on March 7th, we have a public forum on the budget at the middle school auditorium at 6:30 PM. Oh, one last thing. Hampshire College, as you all have read, is going through some changes potentially. There's, so we're monitoring that and involved with that in a pretty clear way, representing the interests of the town, because Hampshire is one of our largest employers and one of our largest landowners. And to me, it's like as if Atkins Market said they were going to have trouble or was going to go out of business or something. We, as a town, would gather around and say, what, what is the interest of our community? Hampshire has about 400 employees, about half of them live in Amherst, and the other half live in Northampton area. So there's a real economic, personal interest for people who work there that we, as a community, have to be concerned about, so we'll be engaged with that as well.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Yes, Kathy?
I just have one question. On page three, this is just someone noted, this was in your report, one of the people of North Amherst, that the North Amherst Library Study is in from Kuhn Riddle. And the question was, at what point will that be available if people want to see the results?
Sure, we can put that, we can give that, put in your packet next, next meeting if you'd like, or it's, it's available, yeah.
Other questions? Yes, Alyssa?
One of the concerns I've had is, as we transition through our new lives here, is that it appears to me that both our Transportation Advisory Committee and the Downtown Parking Consultant are excluding the Town Council as stakeholders. I'm not saying they are actively excluding us, that's not what I'm saying at all, but we're not being advised of public meetings or of surveys, in the case of TAC, directly as Town Counselors, we're just supposed to notice it. And I think that's a mistake, given that we exist and that we were elected, that we should be advised in some fashion. It's totally fine if we are not considered a stakeholder group per se, especially if either of those groups is ever planning to present anything to us, as I believe is the case in both cases. But as I advised my friend who is the Chair of the TAC, if you don't tell us about the survey, then when you come here, we're going to say, who got that survey? Because we don't know about it. And so I'm just asking that somehow there be some thought given to how that discussion might take place throughout the community as things like this come up.
Okay. Other comments? Yes, Pat?
When Guilford was, Maureen was giving the report on how we bid and build, and I was wondering if it wouldn't have been helpful if we had gotten that in advance, you know, enough in advance so that we could all look at it and then just bring our questions, because it seemed to take a long time. It was valuable, but I, I feel like there, I, I could have done it more at home and then just asked him questions based on my understanding or lack of it.
Okay. Other questions, comments? Yes, Paul?
So I'd like to address that because that was a conversation we had, and in fact, he noted that there were a lot of other slides that we did not go through. I think part of it is for your education, but also part of it is for the public education as well, because we think as you start to consider significant decisions, your constituents are going to want to know the context that you're making this decision. So sometimes, you know, we don't go into a lot of detail. This is one, it seemed like people needed to know, we are here, and that was the reason for it. And if it was too long, I apologize for that.
No, 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 it wasn't too long. But, and I thank you for that explanation, because I wasn't thinking about the public.
Okay. Yes, Shalini?
Can we congratulate you for being nominated for the MBO?
Congratulate me? We don't have the results yet, so we don't know whether it was successful. No, it was just a nomination, right? Right. It's one of three. Darcy, yes?
I have one more question for Paul, and that is, in your report, you said something about coming up with calculations about the school project by the 25th or something like that, and just wanted, wanted to know if you could explain what that's all about?
So the, the goal is to have a presentation by the Capital Projects Mayor, Sean Mangano, who was here tonight, he's the School Business Finance Director as well, in terms of how those four, those projects you saw tonight integrate with the school project and how those can look at on a spreadsheet that, and how they could be afforded by the town, and what would need to happen for you to afford all of those projects without blowing through our tax cap, which ones, he's got different scenarios that he's developed. They will be discussed with the Finance Committee first and go through it, sort of as a test drawn to see what, get feedback from the Finance Committee, see what would be good to provide to the council. I do want to note that there, I might have, I haven't talked to the President about this yet, there might be a conflict with, on the 25th for him because there's another, they've changed some things that are at the school because they're canceling, likely canceling tomorrow night's meeting, so I might have to talk to you about another date for that because he can't be at two places at one night.
Really?
So I just learned that, so I apologize for that.
Other questions of Mr. Bauchman? Then we, just in the President's report, I'm not going to review the substance in the minutes of the retreat, but just say that I hope to have the draft goals to put before the council on, at our next meeting, February 25th. These goals will help guide us and also help us measure our own progress, but then will be meshed with the town, with the goals set by the Select Board and form the basis for the Town Manager's evaluation. Are there any future, are there any questions on that? Yes, Kathy?
When, when you're talking about goals, we were, we had some conversations about first year, three and five year, are you going to present?
These are the short-term ones.
The short-term, so what we'd hope to get done by the end of the year?
Exactly.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Future agenda items? Counselor comments? Yes, Steve?
So I know that all counselors are interested in the built environment, or vertical and horizontal construction. So the tenants in my building, which are the Department of Architecture, the Department of Landscape Architecture and Regional Planning, and the Building and Construction Technology Program have excellent lecture series. All, there was a lecture tonight on what UMass is doing for sustainability. So on Wednesday night at, Wednesday afternoon at 4:30 PM, Phil Langdon, who is an author, is speaking about walkable communities. So he is kind of an expert in new urbanism, which is sort of the predecessor of what you might think of as form-based zoning. So it's 4:30 PM in the design building, room 170, so the street address is 551 North Pleasant. And parking is generally free at UMass on the surface lots after 4:00 PM, so, but there's a PVTA stop right in front, so 551 North Pleasant.
Steve, which day is it again?
Wednesday, the 13th. Yeah.
Will it, will it be recorded?
I'll send that to you all.
I'm sorry, Shalini.
Steve, will that be recorded?
I think they, so it's a different department, whoops. It's a different department than mine, I do believe they record them. But if it's, I don't, I'll send that to the council.
Kathy?
I just want to, it, it creates a conflict with yours, I was just checking mine, but there's the TAC meeting that, Alyssa, you were saying they should liaison with us, but there is a TAC meeting talking about a broad schema of transportation that starts at 5:00 that same day, if, you know, just people could be looking at it. And the other thing, Lyna, on potential future agenda items, I just don't know what might fit. On Wednesday night later, at the middle school, the Fort River feasibility study is talking about their results, and I think some of that will be helpful when we are looking at the school proposals. So one issue would be if we wanted to, if we have any room in our agendas to give them some time on our council agenda, because they actually did look at a way to do zero-net energy building, and they've done alternative ways of using that piece of land. So it's both to let everyone know that meeting's happening, but it's a potential agenda item for us, even if we kept it to like 15 minutes.
I also, I'd like to recommend that you check out the two latest conversations with Stan Rosenberg. One was by two members of the Fort River Study Committee, and the other one was the Chair of the School Committee and myself talking about the school project. Both of them, I think, have now been publicly broadcasted, so they should be available on the web. Any other comments, questions? Yes, Alyssa?
Not tonight, but at a future time, if you could clarify what you said earlier, associated with the retreat results and Town Manager evaluation and goals, and we didn't decide on a timeline for the Town Manager evaluation then, that's still being looked at, including by OCA. And so if you could just give us a sense of what decisions need to be made when, associated with that, to make sure we're all in alignment and all talking to each other, that'd be great.
Got it. Thank you. Any other comments? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Dorothy, PM seconded. We have to have a roll call? Are you still awake, Mandy Jo?
I am.
Okay. And then I want to know who won the pool.
All right, roll call. Counselor, Counselor, Counselor Ross?
Hold on. Roll call?
Roll call.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
Counselor Shane?
Yes.
Schreiber?
I'm going to take an hour and 15 minutes for my response. Yes.
Counselor Steinberg?
Yes.
Counselor Schwartz?
Yes.
Counselor Baumild?
Yes.
Counselor Brewer?
Yes.
Counselor DeAngelis?
Yes.
Counselor Dumont?
Yes.
Counselor Griesmer?
Yes.
Counselor Hanke?
Yes.
Counselor Pam?
Yes.
It is unanimous.
We're adjourned.